Good evening. The hour being after six forty-five, it's my pleasure to call the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three school committee meeting to order. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
We are delighted to have a very special recognition this evening of the Walpole High School cast and crew from the recent production of Annie.
Well, I am excited to congratulate an extraordinary cast and crew of Annie as previously mentioned. We are excited to welcome Kendra Nutting here up to the front, you can come on up Kendra, who will recognize the hard work, dedication, and talent shown brightly on the stage a few weekends ago. We have some members here that I think Kendra will recognize and maybe provide an opportunity for a few students to speak, but I'll turn it over to you at this
time. Sure. Firstly, thank you for having us here. These wonderful young people behind me worked very, very hard putting this production together, and it's really wonderful for you guys to be recognizing them in this way. I really, really appreciate it. So this is members of our cast and crew of Annie. Could you guys stand? Look at them. We have members of cast and crew here, so people who were both onstage and backstage working together to put this production together. We had auditions in mid-September and rehearsed for about two, two and a half months to put this production together in mid-November. We sold very well. We outsold our production of Your Good Man Charlie Brown last year and the production of Seussical the year before. So it was a very good revenue year for us. And I do believe there are some students who would like to speak. Who wants to go first? Yay!
I just want to first thank you all for having us. Oh, I'm Francesca Goodsell. I played Miss Hannigan in Annie. I just want to thank you all for having us here. This is a great opportunity for us. I just want to say that being in Annie was such a different theater experience than I've ever had because we had such a short timeframe to put it together. And it was just very difficult to accommodate scheduling and everything, but it was really a production where it came together and it had a fantastic result. So it was just such a great experience to be a part of, and thank you for having us here.
Hi, I'm Lala Kehalan. I played Lily St. Regis in Annie. I really love being part of Annie because the drama production, ever since Ms. Nutting has been our director, has been absolutely fantastic and so much fun to do. And the people are so much fun to work with. And I'm really glad that I get to do this with some of my best friends. And thank you for having us here tonight.
Hi, I'm Alex Richardson, and I played Annie in Annie. And I just wanted to say that this was probably one of the best high school shows I've ever done. I have done, contrary to most people, five high school shows because I was in one in sixth grade. And so was one of our cast members, Ruby Abbott. She was with me, and it was amazing to see her again and everyone again. And it's maybe one of the best casts I've ever had in my life because they're all so sweet. And it was liberating. And it was really fun, and I loved them. And
I do want to send a special shout out, speaking of Alex's experience being in a high school show when she was younger than high school. We did have several members of our cast and crew who were middle school students, and I think two, three of them are here. Can you guys wave? Reese, Mia, and Lola are all students at Johnson. And so they had the additional task of getting to the high school for rehearsals and navigating being with older kids. And they all did a wonderful job. Congrats to you guys. But yes, thank you again for having us, recognizing the arts, I think especially now post-pandemic, and the arts have had a real rough time kind of getting back to where we were after everything. So this recognition is important, and it does not go unnoticed, and I really do appreciate it. So thank you for having us.
Pleasure. Thank you so much for
Of course. Oh, it's my pleasure.
taking this on. Any questions or comments for Ms. Nutting or any of the cast and crew from the committee? Ms. Gallivan?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it's these kinds of things that will provide memories for you guys for a lifetime. And, you know, I don't know how many of you are freshmen, but I think the idea of getting involved sooner rather than later is just a great thing. And, you know, I would imagine the experience that you had will encourage other kids to want to be part of something meaningful. And it's just important to find those things that mean something to you. So congratulations and job well done, it sounds like.
Mr. Buckley?
Through you, Madam Chair. It's always great to have drama people here because they're not afraid to come to the dais and speak to us, unlike some other recognitions and other meetings. I just want to congratulate you for a great show. You're part of a long and storied tradition of drama at the high school. And we talk a lot, my colleagues and I, about wanting all of our students, especially at the high school level, to find the places that are safe for them, that give them joy, that help especially round out your academic education. And obviously, I don't have to tell you about the great benefits of music and drama and performance, and how those skills that you're learning now will take you and be invaluable to you as you go forward into life. But we're just great to see that you have found a group of people to really be together with and create art, which is a very important thing. And we're grateful to see your program grow again after COVID. I know it was tough. We were doing some stuff on the football field and out in the woods and what have you, but you're a scrappy bunch, and we're very proud of that. We're excited for, I think you have a spring production as well, and to see what you can do beyond this level in arts. I know you're, just as we create lifetime learners, I think we're also creating lifetime musicians and artists in this program. So I congratulate you on that. Thank you for coming to see us tonight.
I'll just add that the whole Han family went on Sunday, and you kept a thirteen, eleven, and nine-year-old fully entertained and on the edge of their seat. Yeah, you crushed it. So I thank you for keeping us busy for three hours and happy and entertained. But I really was just so incredibly proud of the work. And Ms. Nutting, thank you for your leadership and for the continued work that you do. I saw Ms. Nutting on the Monday after the show, and she was still working.
The job is never done.
Yeah.
I would like to plug really quick, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Buckley, for bringing up that we do have future productions coming up. In February, we are doing our winter play. It's called Radium Girls. It's a piece of historical fiction of a factory plant workers down in New Jersey around the turn of the century using paint that had radium in it to make watch dials that glowed in the dark. And they all ended up getting, as we can assume now, very sick from it. And the cases that resulted from that are the foundation of OSHA. And so we are putting on this production, and we are also competing for the very first time in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild's High School Drama Festival. This organization has been in Massachusetts for almost a hundred years now, and I think, don't quote me on this, but as I'm recorded, I think this might be Walpole's first entry into this festival. So that is taking place at a site that is to be determined on March second, Saturday, March second. Our performance at Walpole High is February sixteenth and seventeenth, and then we'll be doing some clinics with some theater professionals before we put on the production for some judges. So I'm very, very excited about that. I know that these people back here are also very excited about it. And that concludes my plug. Thank you.
I will just end by seconding Dr. Han's praise for the show. I attended on opening night with my eight-year-old and Ms. Masterson, who's, she was there too. And it was wonderful. And he's still walking around quoting the show. And it was really nice, after attending the past few years, to see such a robust ensemble onstage and not forgetting the people screwing across in the black clothing in the dark. We appreciate you just as much as we appreciate the personalities onstage. So keep doing what you're doing. Any of you seniors? Who's a senior here? Congratulations. So that just means, that's an extra plug for people to come to the shows the rest of this year because it'll be their final opportunity to see our wonderful seniors. And we look forward to seeing the rest of you in future productions. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Do you all want to come up and take a picture really quick?
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
Absolutely. I know, I did too. There's just so many hours in a weekend.
Sandy's here! What's Sandy's real name?
Ollie.
Hi, Ollie. Bravo, Ollie.
Nothing could get in there if she wanted to.
Sandy, you should be in it too. Ms. Nutting, make sure you get in one too. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
How about one where you scoot down and then you have a swoop and then you get under?
Oh, yeah.
We didn't mind the other one. Great job, everybody.
You're, of course, welcome to stay and hear about math and all kinds of things, but if you would rather go home and do your math, that's fine.
Great job. Nice job.
The next item on our agenda this evening was going to be a second recognition for one of our librarians, Anne O'Malley. Unfortunately, Ms. O'Malley is under the weather this evening, so we are going to table this and recognize her at a time when she can actually be present. But we will say congratulations, and we hope you feel better very soon. And next on the agenda is our Walpole High School student report from Victoria Beesty.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Beesty, and I'm a sophomore at the high school. Students are now reaching the midway point of the second term. With progress reports coming out early next week, students are working hard to push through the little over week we have until winter recess. With so much good that has happened and so much to look forward to coming back from break, there is a lot of exciting news I have to share. This past Friday, Spanish Club, French Club, and PM Club took a trip into Boston Seaport District to visit the Snowport Holiday Market. From what I heard from the various club members who attended, it was so worth it, and many of them want to make it an annual event. These clubs got to learn a lot about different foods and holiday cultures, as well as enjoy time with each other and form new friendships. This trip was also a great opportunity for multiple clubs to collaborate with each other and for everyone to have a great time. Many of the other clubs at WHS are running smoothly, as usual, with many of them attending different events and planning different fundraisers. The Photography Club is running its annual photo contest with this year's theme being shadows. The Community Service Club is finishing up a project to help provide care packages for senior citizens for the holidays. NHS is having a coat drive to provide families with warm, gently-used jackets. And SUCO just had their annual lock-in. Science Olympiad, Math Team, and Speech and Debate are all doing great in their meets as well. Winter sports are just starting this week, with many of our winter teams starting to have their first practices, games, and meets. And so far, their seasons are looking good. Girls' and boys' basketball both won their first games of the season. Girls' hockey had the national anthem sung by Boston Bruins' own Todd Angilly for a fundraiser to benefit the Olivia Knighton Foundation toy drive. The Olivia Knighton Foundation was founded in honor of the late Olivia Knighton, an eleven-year-old girl from Attleboro, MA, who tragically passed away in a boating accident. This foundation was created to protect animals and promote child welfare in Olivia's honor. Overall, this school year is moving smoothly, and more great things are to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Victoria. Any questions or comments from the committee? Yes, Ms. Gallivan?
I would just say, welcome. It's nice to have a new face here. Glad to see you. That was a really nice report.
Thank you.
And you're welcome to stay for as long as you want, especially if there's something that was important to you on the agenda. But, you know, we also know that sometimes you have to get home. And we always say it's because of homework.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we transition into our formal agenda tonight, we would like to take a moment to remember a member of the Walpole Public Schools community who recently passed away. Phil Preston was a former teacher of outdoor education for Walpole in the early 1970s and passed away this past November sixteenth. The school committee conveys its heartfelt condolences to Phil's family, and I request a moment of silence in Phil's memory. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is our math update.
All right. Well, if you love math, this is the exciting part of the agenda. And we have some fantastic math, Walpole Public Schools math leaders here with us this evening. We're going to start with our elementary math coaches and leaders, Sheila Rinaldi and Jen Trigian, who will provide us an update of the elementary schools. And then I'll have Julie Chin and Joe Masterson come up after that for our middle schools. And finally, John Rodolphy, to discuss the progress of our high school. So with that said.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us back again this year. Sheila and I are so excited to share the elementary math update with you. I'm Jen Trigian, and I am the math coach at Elm Street School and Fisher School.
And I'm Sheila Rinaldi, and I am the math coach at Boydin and Old Post Road.
And as you know, this is the second year of our implementation of our new math curriculum, Bridges, which is published by the Math Learning Center. I'll give this a minute maybe to come up. The Math Learning Center has created a professional learning pathway to guide schools and districts during their implementation of Bridges and mathematics. This pathway is research-based and articulates these four stages in the implementation process. Boy, I wish we had that there. Awesome. Thank you so much. So last year, teachers were getting started in that first phase and began to establish a strong foundation. Now, in year two, our goal is to solidify that strong foundation and begin to deepen our implementation. Teachers in this establishing a strong foundation stage build their understanding of the way that problems and investigations, workplaces, and number corner work synergistically together to support student learning. Effective planning and instructional practices have been introduced and are being implemented across K through five. As we begin the deepening implementation stage during the remainder of this year and next, teachers will further develop practices that support student engagement, discourse, differentiation, and assessment. Teachers will continue to develop a more nuanced understanding of the learning progressions and visual models within their grade level and integrate this understanding into their planning processes and instructional practice.
So, and as we move into our second year of Bridges, we felt it was really important to share the perspective of our teachers. It's very easy for Jen and I to come up here and tell you what we think about what's going on, but we thought it was really important that we had their voices present. So this, in the next slideshow, we asked them one positive observation around student progress or performance now that we're in our second year of Bridges, and we were totally overwhelmed by their positive response. You can see from the top right graph that we had a fairly evenly distributed response among the grade levels. Some of the most popular comments, stronger math vocabulary, students using their tools independently, overall number sense and deeper conceptual understanding, and that the students and teachers alike love number corner and the pattern and number sense routines that continue to develop these strengths. We also couldn't pass up the opportunity to share a couple of the more We also couldn't pass up the opportunity to share a couple of the more comprehensive responses from our teachers. Parents have reported that their children are demonstrating a deeper understanding of math concepts. Student interest and engagement have improved and children have demonstrated a growth mindset. One teacher replied, "My students are more comfortable having a variety of ways to solve word problems. I feel they are creating a toolbox of strategies from year to year, which has boosted their confidence in overall math problem solving." This was a fun one. Now that students are more familiar with the routines, this teacher is able to allow for the student to be the teacher during number corner. And she replied, "It turns out they're more, it's more appealing to listen to your classmates than your teacher." And finally, one third grade teacher said, "Her students are using a variety of strategies to solve problems and they are exposed to concepts earlier in the year so that they have a better understanding as we revisit them." So, that brings in the spiral of the Bridges curriculum is actually being seen with the students. So, we were extremely pleased that what we thought was happening throughout the district is supported by our classroom teachers' voices. But, of course, it's easy to say these things, but then we always want to look at the data to see if it's backing up what everyone believes is happening. Unfortunately, thank you, the district has supported us in funding Forefront, the data and reporting tool that we're using that allows us to do just that. So, now we'd like to share a little district data with you that is available to us through this tool. So, at each grade level, the baseline assessment that students take in September is very comparable to the number corner four, the last assessment that they take in May. And Forefront has allowed us to analyze this data, to watch for things like summer slide and see where our new students fit in. So, this is an example of our first grade students. On the left is where they fell proficiency-wise in the number corner four checkup at the end of last year, and then how they scored as second graders in September. So, you can see the green shows the percentage of our students that are showing proficiency and the yellow, so there's a little increase. You know, a little summer slide always happens, but, and these are just, just so you know, these are just screenshots. We wanted to make sure we were protecting the identity of our students and our teachers and classrooms. But what we can do, this is an interactive tool, so if we're on, we can click on that number 12 and we can see who those students are. So, we know, you know, who we need to work with to make sure that we're providing the right supports to have all, as many of our children reach that meeting or proficient goal. Click to the next one. This slide, this is what was kind of really exciting, is that we, you know, all of our assessments are recorded. So, and this was our first grade last year on the left, taking the first number corner checkup, which they take at the end of October, and then our students, this year's first grade. And while we're comparing different groups of students, it shows already the impact of our second year of Bridges, that we have a larger group in that green category and we have less students in that orange and red, those students that we are monitoring for interventions and to keep progressing through our curriculum. So, this was a really positive result for us to see that even just after one year, our students are already showing growth. And then this is grade five, which I know as we talked last year, grade five probably was the hardest transition to Bridges because there is that expectation that these students have had the program for the five years before they get to grade five. So, this was kind of really exciting to see that even just after our fourth graders having only one year and now in fifth grade, so the unit one post-assessment from last year versus this year, again, showing a much greater number of students hitting that meeting and way fewer hitting, still being in that sort of red zone that we're working with to move up in our, in the proficiency levels. This is another report that we can get through Forefront and it's called the Sanki Report. And so, what this is doing is comparing a third grade from this year, from where they began at the unit, the students all take a pre-test, to where they ended at the end of the unit. So, you can see on the left, the orange and the red, you know, as you look over, it kind of glides over to the right where those students are now meeting. The ones that were in approaching the partial, most of them are up into partially meeting. So, again, these are great graphs to show us the growth that's happening with the instruction. And then, you know, again, always giving us the opportunity to really target those students that may need extra support and intervention to help them reach their next learning goal. This graph shows, this is another great tool about the graph. This graph is showing, the column all the way to the left is showing the whole entire district at grade two from the unit two post-assessment this year. The middle is showing one of our schools, not going to say which one, but one of our schools. And to the right is one particular classroom. So, you can see that what's nice about these graphs is you can see as a classroom teacher, you have the ability to see that where is my class in regard to how the rest of the school is doing and in regard to how the rest of the district is, is doing. So, you can see that the percentages are really kind of on par from the biggest groupings that we have down to the individual classroom teacher. What is, the real power of Forefront comes in our next slide though, because in that last slide, you can see that it looks like everybody's really doing really well. This, with just a click of a button, now this breaks down that assessment into the standards that were addressed. So, teachers can see which standards students, students are showing a lot of strength in, which standards they mean, want to revisit with a workplace, which standards we can highlight as we're just being introduced. So, those, just so that everybody feels comfortable, those standards that have a little bit more yellow and red in them, those were all standards that were newly introduced and will be spiraled back and revisited throughout the curriculum the rest of the year. But again, this shows the district, the school, and then the individual teacher. And what I didn't want to post any further of what's kind of below the district-wide standards is, again, if you, when it's interactive and you slide down, you can click on exactly who those students are. It enables teachers to really create learning groups in their classrooms so that they can target certain students to accelerate their learning and make sure that they're reaching our goals. Oh, and just one other little plug for it. While we're talking about math tonight, Forefront can also, we're kind of starting to dabble in using it for ELA and other subjects. So, it's a data tool that can, goes beyond math.
And actually, we're just able to import our MCAS scores into Forefront as well for analysis, which is really cool. Our leaders will be meeting with Forefront to look in, to all of that and look at that data together too in January. So, ST Math. ST Math is, oh, sure. Thank you. ST Math is our digital math supplement for grades K to 5 that we continue to use. Each objective of the grade level journey aligns with our state's math standards. This is a gamified visual instructional program designed intentionally with no instructions on the screen to leverage the brain's innate spatial-temporal reasoning ability to solve mathematical problems. And spatial-temporal is where the S and the T for ST Math come from. And to promote equitable access to learning, foster problem-solving through challenging non-routine puzzles, and build deep conceptual understanding. On this slide, you can see our weekly usage goals at the bottom, which have been consistently communicated to teachers since we started using the program. One addition we have emphasized in classrooms is weekly goal-setting with the students themselves. Another shift that has made a tremendous positive impact is focusing on the fifth standard of mathematical practice, so essential to mathematical success. Teachers are developing students' capacity to use appropriate tools strategically by modeling and encouraging the use of concrete tools and manipulatives off the screen as students work through puzzles on the screen. The first graders in these photos are using tools to aid them through the problem-solving process. And this was back in October, and these are first graders getting these tools. These two shifts are part of what has led to phenomenal growth in student progress. As you look at the data in this table, please note that prior to 2021, our district's average progress was below 60%. If you look at it now, our projection is that all four of our elementary buildings, our students K through 5, their average percent progress through the grade level journey is projected to be 100% this year. So, how have we increased students' progress so substantially? And in that last column, cut the number of students making less than 40% progress in, in a school year in half. Besides making ST Math's mascot, that Penguin Gigi, come to life, if you will, as part of our school communities and running fun-themed, school-wide challenges, last year in each school, we started displaying that banner that you can see at the bottom of the screen that tracks and celebrates our school-wide average percent progress as we go. In addition to these school-wide progress banners, last year, our school challenges focused on visually displaying whole-class progress. This in part led to that huge growth in puzzle progress in our schools and helped us cut the percentage of students completing less than 40% progress in a year. This year, we've taken that a step further, adding individual student progress trackers. ST Math teachers from across our district have shared that getting students to set goals and track their own progress increases student buy-in and excitement around their ST Math work. The tracker is a helpful tool for teachers, a way to talk with students about their math work, make their progress visible, and celebrate it. This is helping us with our goal to keep all students on track to reach at least 80% progress by June. Teachers have created motivating, interactive classroom or hallway displays like those pictured for classrooms or even whole grade levels with individual Gigi Penguins for each student to move as they progress. Alternatively, students can choose to keep track of their progress on paper charts. These displays have created an exciting buzz for sure. As a matter of fact, after posting it on Twitter, Elm Street School's kindergarten teacher, Kim Levis, was asked to share her grade-level team's hot air balloon tracker at ST Math's statewide Fall Professional Development Day in Marlborough to encourage other educators across our state to design individual trackers. On early release days this fall, Sheila and I collaborated with our amazing team of digital learning coaches to lead make-and-take workshops to design printable certificates that celebrate individual ST Math achievements. Grade-level teams of teachers created these special Bravo badges for their students using the design platform Canva. These Bravo badges are given to students in 10% progress increments. Each badge has a QR code that takes students to a special game, short video, zoo, live Penguin cam, or other rewarding activity that they get to do during part of their ST Math time the day after reaching a specific level. Building grade-level teams then shared links to these badges on a padlet for all teachers across the district to use in the future. Our hope is that these motivating incentives will also help to decrease the number of students achieving less than 40% progress. So, you may be asking yourself, why is the percentage of student progress through puzzle objectives so important to us? There was a study published last December that strongly supported the importance of a strong ST Math implementation. In a comparison of MCAS results, ST Math schools outgrew their counterparts who were not using ST Math in their schools in statewide math performance rank in 21-22 by just over 10 percentile points. Elm Street School was actually one of the schools in that initial analysis. This was indeed encouraging news, so much so that ST Math offered us the opportunity to dig deeper with them by participating in a correlation analysis. This fall, ST Math worked with Walpole to correlate our actual MCAS data from 2022 and 2023, excuse me, with our students' individual ST Math usage. This study helps to show how progress on ST Math impacts our students on high-stakes tests. We do not have a slide to share with you about this because our meeting to discuss these results with leaders just happened yesterday. And honestly, we're still absorbing all of the information. However, we do have a handout that Sheila just gave you for, that fills you in on the study's findings. And the bottom line is this, how much did ST Math increase our student scores? The study joined our actual ST Math usage data with MCAS scaled scores for 536 students in Walpole's fourth and fifth grades at our four schools. The analysts mathematically modeled how students' MCAS score growth from spring '22 to spring '23 changed based on observed differences in ST Math usage. We are delighted to report that 100% progress of ST Math at Walpole averaged an expected gain of 10 and a half scaled score points on MCAS math exams. So, tonight, we've been able to share our thoughts and some of our teachers' feedback about math learning in our elementary schools. But in closing, we'd like to share some of the most important thoughts of all, those of our district's youngest mathematicians.
I'm Adia. What I like about math is working in groups.
I'm Addie and what I like about math is ST Math. I like it because it's challenging.
My name is Lindsay and one thing I love about math is that if you're, if you're doing a question and you can't find the answer, there's so many strategies. So, if one strategy doesn't work, you can use another.
My name is Frankie and I like being a Gigi helper to help my friends.
And I like to do ST Math because it's a puzzle game.
Like, I, I, um, like, I like to use it to help my dogs.
ST Math.
Hi, my name is Keegan and I like ST Math because I love getting 100%.
The tools are based 10 times.
I like workplaces. Me too.
Hey, I'm Addie and I love that the teachers take their time for you to understand the math.
Hi, my name is Alisa and what I enjoy most about math is learning all the different strategies that some of my friends that they use or even the ones that my teacher introduces. They're really fun to do.
And in conclusion, we'd like to give a huge shout-out and thanks to our wonderful digital learning coaches, Kim Farley at Elm Street School and Jamie Milnemo at OPR for creating that video for us too. Because there are only two of us and honestly, our whole team, the four digital learning coaches, have been instrumental in helping us with the math implementation across the board, from the workplaces that you could see the kids using on the touch view, the apps from Math Learning Center that the students can use, the virtual manipulatives. They've just been phenomenal. They created a whole website with online resources recommended by the Math Learning Center. And they are truly such fantastic instrumental teammates to us.
They even follow up when we can't be in a school. They'll follow up with a teacher. We're in, we're across town. So.
Right, right.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both very much. That was a wonderful presentation. And before we move on to Midland High School, we'll just pause in case anybody has questions or comments.
I wanted to say, I think this tracker explains a lot about why I'm like, 3rd graders asking to do ST Math. Actually happened, I think, yesterday, and I just texted home and was like, why don't you get them on ST Math today?
They love those QR codes. I'm telling you, they've been...
We actually have a problem right now of too many students already reaching 100% on the journey, trying to get them to slow down a little bit and do something else. Look, go outside and play. You don't need to do an hour of ST Math at home.
So, just two things that I was noticing. One is, it just feels like you've made a huge change in approach overall. You know, a few years ago, I think we were still kind of operating under the idea that some kids are math kids and other kids, eh, not so much. And I think you're showing the kids that everybody can learn it and that there's not one right way that is going to make sense to everybody. So I think that's fantastic, and I hope you can pass that along to the teachers because obviously, it's their work that is making it happen. But the other thing is what the two of you were able to do, because this is a lot for a teacher who has to be teaching all the other subjects, too, to be able to pull it apart and make it useful. So you can just tell the way you speak that you're sort of distilling some of the information for the teachers, and that's huge. And I said it was going to be two things, but the third thing I noticed is you just bring math language into daily conversations. And when you talk about the percentages, it's going to mean something to the kids, that they're going to automatically know that if I get a 90%, that's really good. So it's just good stuff, so thank you.
I will walk up and down the halls, and I'm sure the same thing happens to Jen. And, you know, 400 students at both schools, I don't know all their names, but they'll come, "Mrs. Rinaldi, I'm at 35%!" Or, "Mrs. Rinaldi, I got another 10% on ST Math." They are so, they're just so excited for any of the growth that they have. And I know a lot of the teachers this year with the 4th and 5th graders are tracking, having the students track their pre-test and post-test. And we even had one student go up to the teacher and say, "I want to improve more next time, so can you reteach me this so that I can hack, so that my growth can be even more next time?" And to have that coming from the student in 5th grade is just amazing. So the tools that Bridges provides us, the way the teachers have embraced it, and how we've tried to assist them along the way, I think it's really full circle. It's showing growth in all areas.
Your man, Chair. Obviously, the math folks bring the best graphs for their data, which I was noticing throughout your program. It's funny, I was speaking with someone just the other day, I've said this a couple times, what we talked about ends up being in my conversations beforehand. I love the way that this almost casualizes math. I mean, we all, I see Nancy, who's a math educator, nodding her head. We all grew up in an era of math, which was Scantron and a book and a board and always the starkest classroom in the building. And I think this, I love the stat about MCAS. I think that's a lot to do with the building of confidence of the young scholars because it's not a subject area that is distinct and just out there. It looks more like some of the other things we're doing. And I just love how we can use these digital tools to gather, and I think you spoke to it today, to gather so much more data and to, in real, in actual, real-time, see when someone is struggling with a given piece and be able to speak to that and kind of reinforce that in real-time as opposed to, you know, every two weeks at the end of, on a Friday, in an exam. So I think this is really dynamic. And I also know, and I want to acknowledge, that you did a lot of work to bring this to the fore, and I know you're not done in the sense that, I'm sure you're looking at other things, so I'll make sure. ST Math is wonderful, but let's see what everyone else is doing and see what other things are out there so that we'll always be current in these new sort of frontiers. So I think that's great work on your part, and it's clearly providing dividends.
We've also just started implementing, a lot of the classes have started, a new program called Math Fact Lab that right now is free, is created by a 5th grade teacher, and the results of the students have been amazing. You may have heard of Extra Math, and when I introduced it with the class, I asked the kids, "How many have done Extra Math?", and they kind of raised their hand, like, "Ugh", you know, because it was just, you know, do the fact, do the fact, do the fact, with the little coach coaching them on. But the new Math Fact Lab that a lot of the students are using, it was actually in some of the video, you could see it after they get their placement of what group of facts they're working on. It has all different ways to practice, and the visual models that they use in the Math Fact Lab are complementary to all the visual models we're using in Bridges. So it's been, you know, students the other day, 5th graders, "This is so fun!", you know, 5th graders talking about practicing facts, saying it was fun, it was amazing. So we are, we keep, we're always looking for the next thing that's going to help support our students and give them the tools they need to succeed.
Thank you so, so much. That was a wonderful presentation. We appreciate it. And we will move on to middle school now with Ms. Masterson and Ms. Chin.
Hi, good evening. I'm Julie Chin. I am the math coach at Byrd Middle School.
And I'm Jill Masterson, the math coach at Johnson Middle School.
Thanks for having us back again tonight for another middle school math update. We wanted to cover just a couple of topics. Wanted to give you some updates on some changes that we made to summer math this past summer, some next steps that we have planned after MCAS analysis, an update on our progress with Common Assessments, and some collaborative work that we've done with the teachers as far as our role as coaches. So to start, I wanted to take this time to talk about summer math. We introduced a new platform this past summer. We use Delta Math, which has been a tool, a supplemental tool that some teachers have been using in the classroom the past year, or the past year. We used it in grade incoming 7th and 8th. We couldn't use it for incoming 6th because right now, the platform only starts at 6th grade. And the assignments that we created were based on topics that the students did the previous year. So we had stuck, we stuck with a paper packet for 6th grade. We had more than 70% of students in each grade level complete the assignment. That's just the completion rate. The 30%, a lot of that was made up of students that partially completed the assignment. So it wasn't like, we didn't have a very high rate of not even accessing it. A couple of key points with the program was, the program doesn't allow students to skip questions or to guess at answers. They didn't like that part about it. Teachers like that, we like that. It does allow students, though, to move to a different topic if they get stuck. So it's not one of those where if they get stuck, they can't keep going on. They could kind of get out of a topic, and I'll show you that zoomed-in view in a minute, and move to something different. The program provides lots of data for teachers to analyze student learning, and there were a lot of extra resources that were built into Delta Math that I will show you in a second. And I wanted to talk about some other opportunities that we offered to students this summer. So the next slide shows you what the student would see when they open up the summer math assignment. So the topics on the left are all the different assignments that they have to do, and on the right, it tells them how many questions that they need to complete in order to complete that topic. So for example, introduction to ratios, they have to get five right before that topic is marked complete. Now, if they get stuck there and they can only get one, they can X out of that and go to the next topic, so they don't have to stay on that one. So that was the student view. The next is the teacher view, and this is them looking at a whole class. This actually is a view of the whole grade. So across the top are the different topics that were offered, and then, I've cut off student names, obviously, but each row is a different student's data. So the kid in the top row, it took them 10 hours to complete the assignment. This was over 12 weeks. They were given 12 weeks to do it. And it also tells you whether they accessed an extra help video the last time they improved it, and the teacher can go down and see, you know, was there a particular topic that most of the grade didn't access or didn't complete? Okay, then maybe there was something going on there that we should address. The next slide shows individual student data. So now the teacher can go in and click on an individual student and get their data at a more detailed level. So if you look at the second topic down, it says simplifying ratios. That student completed seven questions. They only had to complete five. That's another thing, that it doesn't stop them. They can always do extra practice. So even if they get five right, they can keep going if they choose. I think this person maybe didn't know that, and they kept going because then from then on, they did the right amount. So I don't know if they always want to do extra, but maybe. But that little icon there that looks like a film strip, if this was interactive, obviously, this is just a screenshot, but if you hover over it, you can see that they watched the video and you can see how much of the video they watched to access help. So for example, I might say they watch, they might say, "Oh, I watched the video", but you would say, "Oh, you only watched 10 seconds of a four-minute video." And then, I also saw other kids who it was a four-minute video, but they watched eight minutes. So like, they went through and they watched it again because they obviously didn't get it the first time. The red Xs are obviously the questions they got wrong. And if you click on that, it gives the teacher a detailed view of not only the question that the child received, but also what they inputted for an answer. So this gives a pretty good view of an individual student. So then, the next slide is a sample question. I kind of wanted to highlight why we did, we went with Delta Math and what we liked about it that was different than other resources we have. This question says, Audrey mowed 12 lawns in nine hours. What was her rate of mowing in hours per lawn? Typical question, I actually can't remember if this is 6th or 7th, but it's a typical question usually offered to both. The difference with Delta Math is, if you can read underneath the graph, it says resize the right columns to represent the unit rate. So there is much more of an interactive component, so the kids can move the graphs up and down, and they can see how it changes. So it kind of gives more opportunities for them to interact with the data. The other thing I wanted to point out in this slide is, so this is a sample question. If you look at the top where it says, "Watch video", there is a button like that embedded in every single question throughout the whole program. So it'll bring them to a short video, maybe a couple minutes long. Some are from Khan Academy, some might be from YouTube. It won't necessarily tell them how to do that specific problem, but it will address the skill that's needed to complete the problem. So that's one resource available, and it's in every question, so they don't have to go searching for it. Then the second button where it says, "Show examples", if they click on that, it'll give them like a stepped-out example of that particular problem and how they can solve it. So those two resources are right there for them to access. And then the third resource that we created for them this summer were a few teachers volunteered to work over the summer to do extra help for students. So this calendar was posted to the grade-level Google Classrooms, and the name of the teacher in blue, if you click on that, it will, it would open up the Google Meet. And so the teachers kind of divvied up the work, and they decided to spread it out. They wanted to, they made sure, they were very thoughtful in their approach of, they wanted to make sure that they were always offering it on different days and different times to kind of appeal to all schedules. So that was a new addition that we had throughout the summer. It was available to 6th grade, too, even though 6th grade had a different assignment, but we had 6th graders access it, too, to work on their paper packets. I think that's it for summer math. But it was, I should say, it was a great, I think it was a great success. The kids, they like it. We used Delta Math during the school year, and they don't complain too much about it. It gives, I think it's more of, how do I say this? It's more of a worthwhile summer math experience. They really have to interact with it. There are so many resources for them to work on. It gives the teachers such a good, detailed view of where they are when they're coming in. So I think that the plan is to use it again going forward. The kids seem to like it. For 6th grade, right now, we'll have to stick with what we have just because the platform doesn't allow for it.
We're constantly looking at what other options we have available to us because we would love to get a platform similar to that for our 6th graders that creates the same kind of data output for us. But that's still a work in progress. So at this point, I'm going to shift into talking about MCAS, most specifically about what we're doing in response to it. Because you saw the data from Dr. Han's presentation not too long ago. We didn't want to dive into a lot of the data. We wanted to really focus on what are we doing in response to that data. So you'll notice I circled two of our four next steps that we identified as areas of focus for us because I'm going to go more into depth on those top two. The bottom two are things that are ongoing pieces, building in remediation opportunities based on MCAS and our iReady data from the start of the year to better support our students. Teachers are constantly looking at data to determine small groups of students that they can meet with during X Block and Extensions, not just about current content, but also looking at some of these gaps that students are presenting as having and finding ways to start to close those gaps and work with them on previous learned skills that will support their current content learning. In addition, an area that continues to come up that teachers identify when looking at MCAS data with a real close lens on the types of questions that students are struggling with. An area of concern that we've identified is the level of reading comprehension required for students to be successful on a lot of these math questions that they're being provided. And working with teachers, with special education teachers who have a little bit more understanding of strategies and ways to better support reading comprehension, to provide additional opportunities for students to feel like they can attack some of these problems, even if reading is not necessarily a strength for them. So the top two are the ones that I'm really going to dive into for us. In recent years, we've seen a decrease in the percentage of students who are scoring in that exceeding expectations category of MCAS. We have a high percentage of students scoring in the meeting expectations area, but we do not have the level in that exceeding expectations that we would like to see. So last year, near the end of Term 2 in January, we met as a department with Dr. Han and Mr. Rodolphy to discuss what we could do for our students to hopefully increase that number for the exceeding expectations and to provide opportunities for success for our students. And what we decided to do last year at the mid-year point was to increase the pacing of all of our above-level classes, 6, 7, and 8, to allow for students to be assessed on the full curriculum prior to MCAS, having that full exposure of the entire year's content prior to taking MCAS. We know that this can't be fully effective in just a few months, but it's something that we are continuing to look at. Our teachers started it right from the jump in September with our above-level classes, and we are working as a department to determine how we can create the same sort of impact for our on-level students without overwhelming them with the pacing that we are offering. So what we looked at for data is just how our numbers look and where this impact can happen. I zero in on the grade 7 data that I provided you just because I think it's the easiest visually to see. That green bar in the graph on the right shows our students that are landing in that meeting expectations category. It's a great number. You know, it's definitely higher than our partially-meeting expectations. It's higher than the state's green bar, which is where we want it to be. But what we are really focused in on is that blue bar for exceeding expectations because we know that we have the students that are capable of meeting that level and how we can shift that number, the meeting expectations number, further into the exceeding expectations category. So the work that we're doing with our students is to give them the best opportunity to have the full content, be exposed to the full content prior to MCAS being administered. So I know one question that I'm sure you're thinking about is, okay, if they finish the curriculum before MCAS, what happens after MCAS? And we really thought very deeply about what the best way to approach those last weeks would be. We worked with teachers to create opportunities to continue with the depth of concepts learned, so even though they had been taught, to continue to expose students to additional opportunities of learning for those concepts from the year, building in enrichment and project-based learning opportunities based on topics that they had learned, but also building in a preview of next year's content. And one of the biggest ones that we found was, gave us a real great opportunity is that we had an opportunity to bring our 8th grade and 9th grade math teachers together, and the 8th grade teachers heard feedback from the 9th grade teachers that there were some topics that would be really beneficial for them if students had additional exposure to them. One of them was inequalities, which actually isn't even addressed in our 8th grade curriculum. It's not an 8th grade standard, it's a 7th grade standard. But they were noticing that gap at the 9th grade level. So this provided our 8th grade teachers an opportunity to build that back in, to refresh what they had learned in 7th grade, but also to preview some of what they would do at the 9th grade level as well.
One of the other things that we've talked about over the past several years when we've been here is updates on our Common Assessment work. And now I think we feel like our Common Assessments are in really good shape. We're continuously revising them, looking at them, seeing what works. But now, we're at the point where we're turning this, we're moving from summative work to now formative work. So, you know, Jill and I did a lot of the Common Assessment writing just for the fact of time. You know, it's hard to get the teachers together all the time to write these, so we would... So we would, you know, it's been a long process, but we would pick out lots of questions, bring them to the teachers, what do you like? And it was constantly, they were giving feedback, but we were really the ones writing it. And so now at this point, you know, it's time to move towards the formative assessments, the quizzes, the lesson checks, making sure that they match the rigor that we have created with the Common Assessments, they match the rigor of the MCAS. So teachers have been working together during, John's given us time during curriculum meetings and this past Friday, we had a half day, so they worked on it then, where they can meet with their counterparts at the other school, look at quizzes, talk about how closely related they are, where we could see areas for improvement. So it's something that we're gonna work on as the year progresses and then hopefully, you know, it will be a lot easier next year when we're all in one building and makes those meeting times, you know, more meeting times.
And it's nice, I know, I think Julie will speak to this as well. Now that the Common Assessments have really been in place for over a year and all we've done in the last year is make some minor edits. We're at that point where teachers are becoming even more vocal about what they're seeing. You know, they've had very positive feedback for us with the Common Assessments and our adjustments are very minor at this point, but they're still giving us feedback on those. And they've also spoken to the fact that it's helped them to better understand what their quizzes should look like. It's given them a better gauge of where we're looking to be as a whole department.
Yeah. So we spend a lot of time talking about data and assessments and we want to make sure that we highlight the work that we are doing with the teachers as part of our coaching role. Both of us this year have created shared goals with teachers in our department. The top one is a goal that I had wanted to work on. It was creating more opportunities for problem solving and actually, yep, innovative thinking. Sorry, I think I changed the slide. But this came from this book that I had, had been suggested to me, this Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. And I had brought it up at a PLC meeting and a couple of other teachers expressed interest in reading the book too. So the shared goal that we have is we're kind of creating, it's me and two other teachers at Bird, we're creating this like book group, book club. And you know, we read a couple of chapters and then we get together and discuss it. There's 14 practices in the book, so they've made goals on their own about how many practices they want to try and implement this year with hopefully like a coaching cycle there. And then I made my own goal on how many I'm gonna try and implement into my math lab, like intervention classes, so that we can look at how it works with like a small group and work at how, look at how it works with the whole class. And then the hope is that, you know, after, we know that not everything is going to be the best practice, so that they're willing to take this on, try a few out, and then they can now share out the best practices with the department at PLC time.
And on my side, I'm working with one of my teachers to really focus in on student accountability with note-taking. We got away from note-taking quite a bit when we were in the full digital world of hybrid learning and all that and everything had to be on the computer screen. There's been, we've had talks as a department about how do we put that ownership back on the students? How do we get them to really own what they're learning and be responsible for the notes that they're taking and to increase their understanding, to give them further access to critical thinking and problem-solving opportunities. So one of the things that we've been working on is, on the left, you'll see the older version of the guided notes that were provided. Again, in the hybrid year, it was an attempt to keep things really simplistic, to give kids what they needed, to give them the best access as possible to what they were learning. But there's a lot done for the students there. There's checklists on the side of exactly the steps that they're supposed to be taking to solve those problems that are listed. What we're trying to do is to add in that ownership concept with some questions that we call synthesis, where they really have to fully understand what it is that they're being asked to do and put it in writing. That first question, what properties can be applied to these algebra expressions to simplify them? That's building in some vocabulary of things that they're learning. What happened to the variable in part C and Y? And in that case, the variable ends up as zero, so it's not needed in the answer. Just getting them to fully recognize what it is that they're showing in the problems that they're solving and owning that learning. In addition, we've also built in spice levels of our real-world application problems, trying to give them different entry points into what they're experiencing. If they're not feeling super confident about the content that they're currently learning, they might start with that mild spice level problem, but if they're feeling really good about it, they may challenge themselves with that real spicy problem at the end. It adds a little twist, they have fun with the different titles. Do I really have to do the spicy problem is a question I get asked a lot. But it creates those kind of opportunities for them to have some flexibility in how they're showing their understanding and have those entry points that really feel safe for them as they're showing what they know. As we continue to collaborate with our teachers, we're looking to grow as a department, continue to foster those opportunities for collaboration. And as Julie mentioned earlier, we are just really excited for what we'll be able to do when we're all together all the time next year.
Yeah.
I was, sorry, I was getting caught up in the medium problem.
Don't even look at the spicy problem.
I went there and then I took a step back.
You'd fit in great with my seventh graders.
That may have been where I peaked. Any questions about the middle school portion of the math presentation? Yes, Mrs. Gellman?
I have just a couple. First of all, the note-taking made me think. First of all, I think it's great, the depth that you're asking the kids to go to, but it made me wonder, what resources do they have to do homework when they go home if they don't take notes?
Yeah, so that's a great question. They do have access to, it's fully digital, but they do have access to their textbook where they can go in and see a lot of what they're taking notes on into old-school textbook format, just on their computer screen. But I also know that a lot of teachers do post their notes to provide students the opportunity to go back and see. It works for kids that may have missed a class, but it also, you know, works for the kid that zoned out for a little bit in the middle of math class and didn't get all the notes that they needed. And those opportunities are provided for them to then revisit.
That's great, because that's what I was thinking of, like, because some kids, they feel like they get it, they get it, they get it, and then they go home and they're like, I don't remember. So, so good.
And that's why we still have the balance of the guided notes. We're not looking for them to write down every single piece of information that the teacher is presenting to them, but we're just trying to create a little bit more ownership of what it is that they're learning. So, because that writing piece does impact how they remember it and how they retain it.
No, that's good. The other thing I was just noting is, grade six through eight is the most challenging in terms of the rigor that you're being like tested on. And I think that's just important to note. And I, I love your honesty about how you're, I mean, everything's not perfect. It's, you've got the biggest challenges though.
It's messy.
It is, it's messy.
But it's good when it's successful.
Enough said, but, but the fact that you're, you know, you're willing to come here and, and share the, the hard part is, is great. It's really good. And then my last question is just, the summer, when we had teachers available for help, did it get used?
It did. I don't have the exact numbers. It did probably not as much as we hoped, but like I feel like it's a building block, you know? And that was one of the reasons I brought it to school committee today. So I'm putting it out there so parents know it's available. I wanted them to see what it looks like so they can access this. I think it might have taken off a little more as the summer went on.
And again, it's the first time we've offered it. You know, it's a brand-new offer.
Great idea.
So I think the more it's out there, the more available it is, the, hopefully more it will get used.
Well, thank you. Great presentation.
I think it'd be great if that information got in an email because when I get questions and I may or may not be able to answer the specific questions, it's nice to know there's a resource, but I, I didn't actually know, so I think it would be great if we can get that out there.
Yeah, I think it might have gone out in newsletters, but you know, what happens is it goes out in June and it gets buried, right? So like it's probably something that has to go out in April when, you know, parents are not overwhelmed, it's the end of the year and they're getting a million notifications.
Good idea. Or multiple reminders.
Reminder emails in July, maybe.
Yeah, that too.
You can schedule a send-in in June, so nobody has to send it.
And when in doubt, go to those grade-based Google classrooms, because that's where we post everything for the students. So if there's something out there, that's where, if there's something out there for them to access, that's a good starting point to see what's available.
And that Google Classroom like rolls over with them as they go. So it's like still accessible to them all summer long, so we try and keep everything centralized there, like summer readings there, summer maths there, so.
Thanks.
I'm always, I feel like we say this every time we see you, but always just struck by and always appreciate the way that your presentations zero in on things that we are noticing and steps that we're taking to address them and results we are seeing, because it makes it really easy for us to understand how you are doing, what might feel like a nebulous job or role to people. So thank you very much for that. And the next time you're here, you'll be coming from the same building, which is so exciting. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Great work, you guys.
Okay, last but not least, high school math with Mr. Rodolphy.
Thank you for inviting me this evening. And with Julie and Jill wrapping up, I just do want to say that it's an absolute pleasure working with them and they do a fantastic job and they're a huge help to me. Just gonna do a brief introduction, run through a bunch of data and information and then kind of talk about where we're at and where we're going and what we're working on and focusing on, and some of our targets. So again, our department core belief is that every student can achieve and experience success. Engaging curriculum encourages participation, collaboration, and requires students to develop critical thinking skills to justify their responses. If they, if you can convince them to work hard and provide some engaging activities, then they're going to experience a lot of success and become strong mathematicians and enjoy the process as well. The progress from this year, we've done a lot of curriculum alignment and pacing to ensure coverage of all standards. And the data that I'm going to show you in the next handful of slides demonstrates growth in student mastery and achievement. And we are starting to really use a lot of data to inform our instruction and intervention. And I do want to say here, and I'll probably say it again, I'm just really incredibly proud of the hard work of the teachers and I think hopefully the, the data I'm about to show you will reflect that. The SAT and PSAT information, kind of starting up at the top there, we performed significantly above the state and national averages on the PSAT that was administered in October. We chose to administer it to grades nine through 11 this year. We'd done that probably five or six years ago, I believe. I was not here, but I just figured it was a great opportunity for our younger students to start to see what these tests look like. So we were about, close to 30 points above the state average for grade 11 and grade 10, and I just thought that was phenomenal. And again, those top-performing students in grade 11, there's, there's some scholarship abilities there and the grade 10 students are starting to see what it looks like. And it gives us some great data about what they do know, what they don't know, what we need to work on. The SAT data, on the other hand, was a little bit difficult to compare. We hovered around the state average. There were some testing sessions that we didn't even have enough students take it, where I would, I didn't have access if less than 10 students, it does not give me the information. I just get the, the state and national averages. So it's, it makes it a little bit tricky with who is taking it and how frequently, so I kind of chose to do a deeper dive on the, on the PSATs where I had a lot more information than the SATs. This kind of shows a graph of, blue is the meets or exceeds. This is grade 11, the standard for being well-prepared for college work. That's what the PSAT looks at. Red is approaching and yellow is not yet approaching. And again, this is students that would be successful at, that means C or better in grade, in college-level work, this is what the target is. Again, well above the state and national averages, over half our students are meeting and exceeding. And grade 10, again, very similar. They have obviously a slightly different scale because they're not expected to know quite as much, even though they're taking basically the same exam. The unfortunate news on the PSATs is with the digital administrations, the item analysis is no longer available. So I am allowed to kind of see some information on the different topics, which are heart of algebra, problem-solving, and data analysis, passport to advanced math. Other than that, I don't get to click on specific questions and get information about that, which is frustrating. All the stand, all the different strands were relatively equal, so nothing stood out. What I did do was drill down on the previous years that were not digitally administered to kind of do an item analysis to look for some growth opportunities. And the ones that I found were statistics and that's gonna pop up again when I discuss MCAS. Essentially, in Algebra I and Geometry, there's 50 to 60 standards and they're all new from previous years. So it's a lot of content that needs to be covered and statistics is kind of, it's listed at the end of the standards and teachers, I'm teaching geometry, statistics is a little bit different, or I'm teaching algebra, statistics is a little bit different. And it kind of gets saved for last. It's not unique and the issue is that MCAS takes place on a set day before the end of the year and sometimes the statistics, the statistics standards haven't been covered yet. So what we're really doing is taking a look at how can we adjust our curriculum and adjust our pacing so that we do cover this content prior to MCAS, prior to the PSATs, but at the same time, not rush through for the sake of covering it. One other thing that we noticed was linear regression and approximation. The students were struggling to interpret and make good estimates and educated guesses. So some teachers adjusted their instructional strategies this year and the students are now doing it interactively on platforms. They tried out some different platforms and the students were demonstrating more mastery and hopefully that will show up on, on some of the standardized testing as well. Our next steps will be to review next year's data after this curriculum alignment that we're working on now. And there's also a new fantastic tool on the College Board website. There's two things, there's a huge question bank, so teachers can pull questions from specific topics as they're working on, say, some kind of statistics. They can pull questions from the question bank on that topic and, and give them as activators or a mini quiz or a problem of the day or something like that for students to get familiar with the type of questions that they will see on the PSAT. The Skills Insight is actually, I'm still exploring it more. And before I pass it out and push it out to the teachers, I want to make sure I'm, I'm 100% on it. But what it does, we've gotten information about how each student did in each topic, each of those three main topics. And you can go into the Skills Insight and select based on what air, what range they did from the lowest performing and select content based on that range. So if they struggled with algebra and, I mean, really struggled as low as it gets, you click on it and it gives you some very basic questions that will build towards the next level and build towards the next level. So it kind of gives us the opportunity to do some individualized instruction, some opportunities for intervention here. So I'm in the process of, process of exploring it more and I'm sure later this year, I will have a lot more information about that. Advanced placement. Some quick background, our enrollment in the AP math courses increased from last year and it's close to the highest numbers that we've had. We are expecting significant enrollment increase, knock on wood, next year due to the addition of AP pre-calculus, which I'll talk about in a couple of minutes. Our overall performance improved. We had our highest passing rate in many years, as far back as I could track it. Seventy-six students took AP math exams, 71 received passing scores, so about 93%. Kind of a five-year data, the enrollment consistently, well, it's been, 2022 is a very high enrollment year and this year as well. The things I'd like to key in on is the passing rate, percent three or better, 95, 85, 95%. And the Nash, or the global averages rather, are significantly below that and we're a point plus above the global averages in each of the three classes. So our students are performing exceptionally well on these exams and at the same time, we're increasing to higher enrollment numbers. So it's kind of that, finding that perfect balance. We want to give as many students as possible access to college-level instruction, but at the same time, there's still, all those students that are taking that risk are still doing well and we hope to continue to increase. are still doing well and we hope to continue to increase the enrollment. Just some visuals, AP math course enrollment, again, statistics continuously going up. PC is the one that kind of varies from, from year to year, but overall, we're just seeing growth, which is great. I, I tell the students, if they're on the fence about it, the worst-case scenario, you don't pass the exam and you take the course in college and it's going to be a very easy college course for you. That's the absolute worst-case scenario of taking an AP math course. Average scores, the light blue, I know that one's furthest to the right, that's, um, the 2023 global and we can see kind of our scores have been high and, uh, in many cases, just going up. Percent scoring three or better, again, uh, seven, the, we see some increases and just staying high and again, that light blue line over on the right is the global and Walpole is consistently exceeding that. Uh, the number of students scoring three or better, again, increasing, uh, and hopefully next year, again, all of the stuff is going to increase significantly, which brings me to the part of this that I really wanted to talk about. AP pre-calculus, new course offered by the College Board. It was available this year. I did make the decision not to offer it, um, back in December when we're finalizing the program of studies. They had no resources. They had just put it together, um, only a handful of experts, I would say, and I did not feel comfortable trying to answer questions of, of students and parents and making sure that they were taking appropriate coursework, that we could give them a great experience, without really knowing what it was about. So, um, went to a training over the summer, got a lot of information, it's in great shape now, so will be part of our course offerings next year. Uh, the main goal of this from the College Board is that it is designed for accessibility and equity. It's basically any student who's successful in Algebra II can be successful in this course. The targeted cohorts are non-STEM students who are seeking college math credit. They might be going into the liberal arts, uh, don't need to take seven math courses in college and may not want to take too many at all, but they need a math college credit, this is the perfect course for them. For students that are headed on the STEM pathway, but they're not quite ready for calculus, this is a great preparation at college-level rigor, um, that will make college calculus very accessible to them. So, I would say, I'm hoping for huge numbers in there. Our Algebra II honor students, we're still pushing them into the AP calculus courses, but I think this course is perfect for our CP I students and, and the number potentially of our CP II students as well. I think anybody that wants to put in the effort, I mean, it's an AP course, um, but it's absolutely accessible. Uh, I've thoroughly looked through the content and I think students can have a great deal of success and, and they, I've been to, I visited every single Algebra II course, every section back in, uh, October, I believe, and had a conversation with them, introduced them, had, showed them the curriculum to show them that it was accessible so they can start having conversations with families and, and making decisions about, um, hopefully taking a, an AP course and getting some college credit. Next thing is iReady. Going to cover this a little bit briefly, but I do want to discuss its future at the high school. Grade nine, the, the dark green is, um, high on, it's on or above grade level. The light green is, is mid-grade level, yellow is up to one grade below and then the light red up to two grades below and the dark red is, is the, those performing significantly below. We see some great increases from the fall to the spring, this is last year's data. The, I pulled just the algebra for grade nine, pulling the geometry from grade nine doesn't make a lot of sense and the geometry was the focus in grade 10. So we definitely some growth. The iReady use going forward, the results are useful. There are some questions about how great the data that we get is. The length of the diagnostic can at times reduce the effort of students. Uh, they enjoy the Delta Math, as was mentioned by Jill and Julie, the number of students are, are not as enthusiastic about the iReady at the high school level. At the, the concerns for me is that the reports that we get that high school are very generic. They haven't designed an instructional component for the high school level. I spoke with them a couple of years ago, they said it was in the process, but it does not seem to be. My first year, I phased it, I, I had sophomores take it because I wanted to identify the learning loss from COVID and I think we did a good job working with that and intervening for the students that had lost out on some algebra. I phased that out this year because we have other data sources that are, are phenomenal. The Delta Math is giving us great information, the PSATs now, we have MCAS data, our common assessment data. And this basically just gives us a number and it does, it's not specific about what the students struggle in. It, it doesn't give us what it does at the middle school. The middle school, the reporting is much more significant, much more comprehensive. So I'm currently really evaluating if we're gonna have freshmen take it next year because we have these other resources. We're having, summer math gives us some great information and we can use some more concrete information to be specific with our interventions with our, with our students that are struggling, as opposed to the students below grade level. Tough to figure out exactly how to help them if we don't understand as well what they, exactly what they're below grade level on. So I should be able to report later this year on, on the results of my evaluation. MCAS. I was thrilled with the results, again, I think this just reflects the hard work of the, of the teachers and the students. In 2021, uh, the spring 2021 assessment, 10%, we're 10% or more above the state average on only seven of the 42 questions, which is still great. This past year, we're 10% or more above the state average on 31 of the 42 questions. That's three quarters of the questions and, and to me, that's just phenomenal. Uh, I know Dr. Han reported some of the other information, so I'm kind of keeping this a little bit briefer. Uh, we saw a significant increase in the met expectations with the students with disabilities cohort, which was, uh, thrilling to see. I think that's a, a critical group that we want to focus on. Uh, our student growth percentile jumped by 10% uh, to well above the state average and we exceeded the state student growth percentile in every subgroup that had available data. Uh, anything less than 10 students, we do not get the data, uh, because that's just not too statistically valid. 74% of our students met or exceeded expectations, the state was at 50%. And only 2% of our students did not meet expectations. So our goal is to continue to shift our partially met students to met and the met to exceed. We, similar to the middle school, we want to grow that exceeded percentage as much as possible. And obviously, uh, if we could, if we can, get that 2% to 0%, love to have every student out of that and not meet. So our areas for growth, as I mentioned before, statistics, we're realigning our curriculum and ensuring that we cover the content before, um, the actual MCAS test without rushing, so we're being very thoughtful in our, in our pacing and our structure of our lessons and units. And what we also noticed is some, um, some of the complex circle questions. So we're trying to look at how can we adjust our rigor and, and what we ask our students? And again, that tends to be towards the end of the year, sometimes slides by, uh, depending on the pacing, so we're just really kind of making sure that we address those contents. But, um, uh, one of the statistics questions that we struggled with, and again, struggle, we're 3% above the state average, so, um, we had, I think our worst question was 1% or 2% below the state average. So, it's central tendency. It's one of those statistics standard that's, that's buried in, in Algebra I and it's been taught, but we use some of these questions to, uh, kind of analyze how students are looking at it, the mistakes that they're making and making sure that we're giving them questions that are open-ended instead of just purely computational. And, uh, hopefully we can get this kind of question to above 10% as well. Uh, by the way, I think I can go back, right? Similar questions to this with a little bit more elevated rigor, uh, is, are the questions that we, were a little bit, um, past year's PSATs where I could look at the item analysis. Uh, it was some similar content, so it's, it's something that we're taking a hard look at and figuring out how we can better, uh, make sure that we have the instruction and that it's thorough at the, at the Algebra I ninth grade level. Delta Math, we're continuing to use that, uh, very frequently. Uh, it's used as a formative, it's used as classwork, homework. It's a great tool, honestly. Um, I was out for a day or two recently and rather than kind of leave generic work, I can leave work that I know that students have access to videos and they can go and, and do some self-structured learning instead of, here's a worksheet, uh, with a set of problems. They can, they can learn even in the cases where I might be absent. We get immediate and specific data for students and teachers. There's great opportunities for differentiation, uh, like I just mentioned, student-guided learning, they can kind of teach themselves, which made it great for summer work. The response from students has remained positive, which is fantastic. Any, any learning platform that the students are, are happy to use, can't argue with that. So we're using it as an intervention resource as well. For the first time, and I'm gonna tell them now, although they might have figured it out, the way I looked at it, uh, summer math is very valuable. And what I had noticed was that we're spending quite a bit of time revisiting previous year's content and when we're struggling at times to get through all the new content, the less time we can spend on the previous content, the better. So the summer math allows students to just kind of come in a little fresh with the content. And so this year, incoming freshmen had them, had the summer math, I looked at it as they're used to summer math, so we'll just keep it and it will get grandfathered all the way through senior year. Uh, and teachers did report stronger retention, there's the freshman teachers, that the, this year's freshmen retain last year's content better than they have in the past, so definitely some positive results for it. It's used to create focused content for extended absences and level changes. What I've had this year that I haven't had in the past and it's been fantastic, mixed results thus far, a couple of students have asked, a little bit later in the year than ideal, to move up a level. And this gives me the opportunity to say, okay, here's where this class is, here's where this class is, here's a set of content that you need to get done in order to be successful at moving up a level. We've had mixed results thus far, so it's a process that I want to, uh, revisit, look at and make sure that it's, it's well-done, uh, because I'm never going to tell a student no if they want to challenge themselves with more rigor. Interventions. We are consistently using data to encourage and mandate, in some cases, students to access supports. We have intervention during our study halls, almost every period, uh, that is available. Uh, we've scheduled a math teacher to be down there. And they're reasonably well-attended and then Wednesday afternoons are extremely well-attended. I'd be surprised if we don't have at least 80 students in the math hallway, uh, for that one hour on Wednesday afternoons. So that's a very, very useful time for our department. We're using MCAS, iReady and PSAT data so, to select students for targeted Wednesday afternoon support. Uh, we had somebody, our, we lost the interventionist position this year, but, uh, somebody has stepped up and volunteered to kind of take over that Wednesday afternoon session with that targeted group, met with the students who had not passed the MCAS a couple of times before the retake in November and we are now finalizing our groups of sophomores for algebra review and that will start, uh, shortly after the new year, uh, to get them on track to be successful on the May MCAS. So the last piece that I really want to talk about is data analysis in a different way, content retention. Um, we've struggled the past couple of years to try and find the right way to do this. We want to analyze summative data while students are still in our classrooms. The issue with MCAS, AP, well, PSAT gets them back to us pretty quickly, but MCAS especially, we don't find out until they're gone. They're still in the building, but they're not in our classroom and we can't help them prior to the MCAS. We don't get that information quickly enough. We tried pre-assessments, we tried some Google Docs, those are very unwieldy. Uh, the Delta Math that we did last year, uh, it was very useful, but the students felt overwhelmed by all the parts of it. So we've been really trying to figure out what's the best way to do this. And I'm really hoping that this is the answer that we did this year, or we're trying it out. So we're focusing on unit and quarterly common assessments, that way it's not overwhelming. Uh, our curricula pacing and assessments have now been, they're being based on current data. The results from common assessments are input into a system called ZipGrade. So the students will bubble in their multiple choice, the assessments then, the free response, the short answers get created by the teachers and those actually get bubbled in. We take a picture of each kid's, um, each student's Scantron, for lack of a better term, although that's, I think that's a trademark thing, but a similar form. And, uh, it automatically collects all the data. It's very detailed data and it's immediately compiled. We get overall averages, we get averages for each question, we get percents for each distractor, uh, for the multiple choice question, so it gives the teacher immediate feedback about each question and all the content. We're still in a lot of progress with this. So teachers have a goal this year, every teacher in the department. They're gonna pick two items on the common assessment, they're gonna do item analysis on each of the common assessments, but they're gonna pick two topics where the students demonstrated a lack of mastery. They're gonna revisit the topic with current students because if we know they don't know it, we shouldn't just allow that to stand. But they're also gonna then review the instruction, both the lesson and the pedagogy, and revise as needed. And then, idea, you know, reteach it a little bit differently next year and review the data and, and hopefully we're gonna see some improvement. And if we pick a couple of topics each year for the, for a few years, then we'll, really should be able to pick off all the topics that students are struggling in. The data can be tracked by standard. This is in progress, what I, what has to be done and I'm going to be putting all the standards for all the courses into the system and then each question has to be tied to it, so it's gonna be a little bit labor-intensive. Um, we've just started this, um, whole platform over the past couple of months, so we're not at that point yet, but we will be. And people are still kind of getting comfortable with the, with the whole program and how to use it, but it is extremely user-friendly and relatively straightforward once you take a couple of cracks at it. Uh, so, I kind of wish I'd cut the thing on the right a little bit more to focus a little bit. This is the basic data I got from one of my exams. Uh, and just as a quick note, a 50% roughly each year, a four on the exam, so don't be horrified by those, uh, averages. Um, that's actually, I was pretty pleased with this. Uh, my tests are, are pretty hard because I want to model them based on the actual AP exam so students are prepared. The item analysis is the important part. It tells me how many students got it correct, the percent that got it correct, um, some other random data that was tough to kind of cut out there. But it's the last column that's really interesting, the, the alternate answers. So if you, on number nine, what I'm able to see is the answers are all over the place. And what I took from that is, it was a question that included some calculus, obviously, but also some rules of exponents with powers. And students demonstrated that they were all over the place on it, so it was a pretty quick fix. Did about a 10 or 15-minute lesson in class, it's a topic they'd seen before, but not at great depth, so we just kind of recovered it, established the base rules, checked in on it and, and they were all set. Number 13. Answer option A was what the vast majority of the students that got it wrong made a mistake on. And that was a, um, multi-derivative with a chain rule and so it was an error that... And that was a multi-derivative with a chain rule, and so it was an error that, since a lot of students made it, I was able to address what the error in their thinking was, check in, ask them to explain their thought process, and have a conversation with the class. What's not on here is one of the FRQs, one of the open responses that, as a class, they did very poorly on, and it was on a certain topic. And, you know, it was part B of number 15 or whatever, and I had to own it. I didn't do a good job teaching that. So I told them that, and we revisited it, and, you know, that's a, a learning process for me. But that's what this platform can do, so teachers are meeting together. Ideally, they're, they're open, and I'm encouraging them to just be upfront and honest, and if one teacher got 60%, or sorry, 80% on one question, one teacher got 20% on one question, hey, what'd you do? Let me learn from that, let's collaborate. Your lesson clearly might have been a little bit stronger than mine, I'd love that resource. So our work in progress, our data demonstrates, in my opinion, great growth at all levels. Again, I'm super proud of the hard work, the dedication, the passion of the teachers, and they're clearly creating curriculum that is getting students invested, and again, I'm proud of the students and the results that they've shown. We're gonna continue to refine our vertical alignment across grades and horizontal alignment across levels. I really want to make sure that we're not creating too much of a gap between our different levels of classes, so that there is that flexibility for students to, to advance from a CP2 class to a CP1 class, or CP1 to honors as they move along as a mathematician. Some of the things we're doing for that, to, will help us with that, peer observations, that's the other goal teachers have this year in the department. They're going to observe their peers two to three times this year, and then have debriefs afterwards, and then obviously, PLC and curriculum meetings gives them some time to plan as well. Gonna continue to design thoughtful lessons and assessments that push student engagement and critical thinking, and continue to extend the use of data to inform our curriculum and our pedagogy. I think that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Riddick? Mrs. Gallagher?
We got your money's worth out of you tonight. That was a lot of good information. I guess I would just say, I think it's great that, that you have that tool that you just talked about at the end, because, you know, like, I knew we had it at the elementary and the middle school level, but to have something that you can really use at your level is, is fantastic. And it also, the things that resonated with me are, it feels like you're thinking about math as just a comprehensive subject, that, you know, you're not only responsible for algebra if you're teaching ninth grade, or, you know, that sort of stuff, so I think it's, I think it's great. So thank you.
I'd like to just also highlight again what an achievement it is to expand the number of students who are participating in AP courses while also raising, you know, the test scores. That's truly something, it's not easy, and I think we're really pleased to see that, and really excited to see what the AP pre-cup course does.
So am I.
Yeah. That'll be a big highlight of next year's presentation, maybe.
I hope so, yeah.
For two years, after you get the test scores. All right, thank you very, very much, math team.
Thank you.
Great overall work, great overall.
Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays.
You guys have to stay.
You don't have any math to go home with.
You don't have any homework.
All right. Next item under new business is our discussion of the Walpole High School project, and we have some friends with us this evening who've been very patient.
Yeah, tonight, we have, they've learned a lot about our math, though, which is good. We have Chris Besson from Tapley Architects, and Kate Schrod and Brian Kelly from Vertex here to update the school committee regarding the Walpole High School project design, and then maybe have some discussions, be able to answer questions, to contribute to the potential ranking of the priorities of that design.
Good. Thanks for having me. Great conversation tonight. So that's always fun. I think the, the update on the high schools that we're in, so we've started design development in November, and so we're about a month and a half now into that, and it's, it's going well. We're sort of tracking down all of the things that you all had previously discussed back in June, and since then, a few things have come up that we asked you to take a look at and consider, and so we need to have you all make some decisions on, on that tonight, hopefully, and sort of keep us going in the right direction. But we're due to have design development wrap up in about a month or two, and have some better cost data on that. But really, the discussions tonight, both all the way from, from the arts coming in to math, and then all the rest of the subjects, the endeavor for the high school is, you know, great learning environments for students to achieve at high levels. And so that's what we're focusing in on right now, and hopefully can deliver on shortly. So I'll let you guys talk about the options and things, and if you have questions, I'm here to answer them, so.
Before we sort of start to discuss, when you say, Chris, that things kind of in the design development process have led you to come back to us and ask for more clarification, is there anything specific that we should be aware of that maybe we, we haven't heard before about, like, you know, problems you're running into, or questions that are sort of high-level?
No, I think, I think at the last time we met, there was a series of options that you guys reviewed and analyzed and, and agreed that those were the priorities for the project. And so since the break between those, that June meeting and November, some things have come up, like, like electrification for the high school, which is a big, it's a, I mean, it's a priority everywhere, but especially the HVAC. And to get the school off of fossil fuels. And, and then things like driveway extensions for circulation onsite and things weren't in the project back then, but they've come up as items that might be priorities, or might be things we want to include in the school now. And so we've been tracking those, we've got some data points for those that we've shared in terms of, you know, order of magnitude, and so I think we want to get, put those back in front of you and see if those coming to light shift any of the other priorities that you've made or talked about before. And then as we design and go forward, obviously, there's budgets and constraints on money and things like that, so if, if when we get to that moment in design development where we get another cost estimate and things appear to be high, we need to know sort of an order of priorities that we can start to develop the documents in. Not, I think the goal is that we would still bring it all forward to get a bid on, but if we have to prioritize them in the bidding time, we need to know what that order is, so.
Great, thank you. We met, we had a budget workshop earlier this week, and we started this discussion amongst ourselves, and I will say, regrettably, that a strong consensus did not emerge on prioritization. I'm sorry, that's not what you want to hear after sitting here for two hours, Chris, but, you know, we were, we want to continue the discussion, we did come up with some questions for you, just in terms of phasing options and, and sort of what postponing might do to certain costs and things like that. So I don't know if we want to go into those questions right now first, or if we want to add additional comments. Do you have any other ones? Go ahead, Tim.
Some of what we were talking about was just understanding which portions were tied together, so we could prioritize it. I know we spoke about this previously, but like, for example, if we're doing the field house piece of things, which a lot of people seem to think was a priority, does that necessitate site work? Like, we kind of, you know, while we're prioritizing certain things, if there's a way to divide up things where you would put certain things together because you had to, and then, you know, another question I had was, if you break things down, you know, is there gonna be a bigger impact later on certain things where you could say, okay, well, if we hold off on that, that's likely gonna cost way more down the line, because while the walls are open now, so we really should do this, because if we try to remedy it later, that'll probably cost another $4 million down the line. So we just had a lot of questions about that in terms of construction, and we're hoping you could give us, like, some, some idea of what kind of belongs together in priority and pricing.
Okay. So the options, so, yeah. The field house can be done on its own. You can, you can add a field house to the building and really not touch anything else. That's kind of one of the uniqueness things about that. It does enable other things to take place. So before I talk about those, the field house can be done by itself. It is, it does take over some of the parking onsite and some of the pattern, the circulation patterns for, especially the way the buses maneuver right now. And so that, there's a follow-on that one of these is called, one of them is called the site work for the field house, and that basically creates a new parking lot sort of over by the concession stand in the field, in the stadium.
Football field, yep.
And reorganizes some of the sort of stuff right adjacent to the field, the field house. And so those two things, you don't have to do the parking all the way over, but you would need to address some of the, like, flow of traffic patterns specifically around the field house. And so I consider those two things related in my mind, but the site work for the field house can be pared down if you had to. If you were like, we don't care about more parking, which I know is not a true statement, but if you, if you made that choice, you could say, well, maybe not all that, we can just do the stuff around the field house and, you know, put some plants in and be fine.
Can I just ask a follow-up to that question? So how do you see that site work and the driveway extension interacting with each other?
Yeah. I don't see them interact, like, they're interacting because I think it reduces or it helps address some of the problems around site, traffic patterns and flow right now, and safety concerns. But the driveway extension doesn't affect the field house unless you came up with a different pattern of, like, pickup and drop-off and where buses go and where they don't. But I think it helps give you options in the long run, so.
So the site work that's associated with the field house and the driveway extension can be considered independently of each other without really?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful.
Yep. And then the field house itself, so if you do the field house, that means you're vacating the area within the gym that's there now, your existing gym. And so the field house project, or the field house scope makes way for a multipurpose music space that you can do, but you can't do the multipurpose music space unless you do the athletic, the, the field house. And then if you do the multipurpose music space, that makes way for the student support center, which is where music is now. And so by music, moving music into where the multipurpose space is, or that gym, you can then move student services up to the front of the building, which was a goal. And that, so that's how those are linked. You have to do the field house to move the multipurpose, to then move the student services. So if you don't do the field house, you basically can't do the other two. Does that make sense? And then science can really just be its own thing, honestly, because you can do science Reno upstairs on that second floor. It's kind of an isolated area anyway, and so science can be its own thing. And the greenhouse can also be its own thing. It does not have to be linked or related to the science scope at all. And if, if I were giving a professional judgment on it, I would say the greenhouse would be the easiest thing to do at a later point in time, because it's, you know, it's kind of tucked into a spot that already exists, and you can build that up at any point without really much impact on students or, like, the activity in school. Obviously, construction's, that's always an impact, but it's less of an impact than needing to take over the whole science wing and do that all, right? The included with the science, included with any of those things I just mentioned is upgrades to HVAC that serve those specific areas and functions. And so if you take any one of those or all of them, you would get HVAC upgrades that would be towards the electrification goal. So that electrification scope that I mentioned is everything outside of that, outside of these described scopes, and that you could also do whenever, I think, because it's gonna be outside the scope of any of these work anyway. But it is, that's something that will exponentially increase in cost as you move further and further out from today, doing that. And the impact of already being onsite, doing this other work and connecting that right now, you're, you're missing, if you divorce, if you take those apart from each other, you can always go back and do it, but it's, like, the economies of scales and efficiencies happen whenever you do it all together. And so that's why it sort of came up as an opportunity to really capitalize on that. And I think there's also, if I'm not mistaken, there's funding opportunities that support those that if you might miss out on if you don't take them now, so.
Could I just add one thing to that as well? The, the, there's, some of the systems are at the end of their useful life, so we have to make a decision on a fair amount of these systems as well, that just we have to deal with in the next few years.
And so I just want to make sure I understand your point about the HVAC. So the, the sort of, the line item in here for HVAC is all of the areas not already being addressed.
Yes.
So, for example, the cost of the science renovation would include addressing HVAC for that portion of the building. The multipurpose space that's currently the gym, it would include the HVAC needs for that space.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Buckley, and then Mr. Green.
Do you remember, Chair, on that, and this cost associated with HVAC is inclusive of rebates, tax credits, and like, we think, or no? So this is the higher number, okay.
Yeah, so, so that's, it's not, that, that's an all-in cost. And then any recovery that you get from that with incentives or anything else would come after the fact, but the town bears the brunt of the upfront cost. So, but you can't, yeah, and I think there's a detailed conversation elsewhere about that, but.
Just, just to, for instance, if we didn't do one of these spaces, whether it be student services, you know, or, or turn the, the current gym into music, or the science wing renovation, we would have to do HVAC in those places. That, that would, so, so standalone HVAC number would be higher, because HVAC for the science wing is rolled into the science number, but if we didn't do the science wing, we'd have to spend additional money to do HVAC in the science wing, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Basically, we just need to do it all.
Okay, so.
This is like an LSAT logic puzzle.
It is, I feel like that.
Let's get the mathematicians in here.
Seriously.
Scenario A versus scenario B.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Okay, so I think you're getting a little bit of a sense of why we're still kind of all over the place. Add on to that, we try, we have had one meeting recently with the town administration, with the select board, and with the finance committee, and we don't want to do this project at the expense of our operating budget. So in other words, we don't want to have a project like this going and have to lay off people, like, you know, and that's, that's kind of our bottom line. And I think that, that part, we're pretty much in agreement on. So I don't see us making this schedule that you're talking about, because I, I think we, we are scheduling another meeting in the very beginning of January to talk to those people again. But personally, I need a reassurance that we have, there's a lot of components to the financing piece, but we need an assurance that we're not going to be laying off people, basically, if we do this now. And so one of the questions is, if money's tight for the next two years, should we wait two years? And if that's the case, you know, not exactly what anybody wants to hear, but that might be the, the decision that we have to make. be the, the decision that we have to make. So that's one, one piece. The other one is we have the permanent building committee who is, you know, charged with running these projects. And I know they're going to want input to the design process. So that, that's just another thing that I was thinking about. The thing about HVAC that prioritizes it in at least some of our minds is the fact that the incentives are available now and what may or may not be available a couple of years from now. So we, we have to factor that into our thinking. And then the driveway, which is a much smaller piece, I had, you know, I had reached out to you with a bunch of questions about that because I did meet with Steven Bush and I guess there's two parts. One is he feels strongly that there's a, there's a safety issue that needs to get addressed. So we may need to be getting going on that sooner rather than later. But secondly, potentially there are other options that we could consider other than the, the traffic flow that was considered, that's considered currently in this project. And it basically has to do with having the buses be out front in the, in the front loop and having the, the traffic for parents go onto the site and around. So that's just, those are all the things that made it hard for us, among other reasons, to come to consensus. I don't know whether, whether you have any, any thoughts on any of those things, but those are some of the things that we were juggling the other night.
Yeah. Absent very specific questions and stuff, I don't, I don't have.
Can you speak to the cost differential of sitting on it for a year or two? Like, we know obviously cost will go up, but you know, we just don't know by what magnitude.
I would say conservatively that probably cost escalations are five to six percent a year. That's, that's, I mean, rearview mirror years, it was higher, but it's starting to kind of calm down a bit. But I would say you could expect escalations to be higher, so.
I, I think pre-COVID, the number was six and then COVID it spiked and so you're saying it might come back down to the five to six range?
It's already there. We're getting numbers that are supporting that, but I think, I think, you know, five to six range per year.
Through you, I, since you're here, I feel in some ways like we're explaining why our term paper is light, but obviously, as you said, you can understand our difficulty in deliberations. Should you be sitting here with us, what would you do? I think I would just be interested in if you had to break this up, for what it's worth, as someone who's been so deeply involved in, in the design, because it seems like as we talk about doing a piece of it, a lot of these options also leave us with a big empty space that is unutilized but still heated for a year or two as well, so.
Can I frame that question just a little differently?
Absolutely.
Like we did with the middle school, you guys designed based on our educational plan or educational values. You've now been part of this district for a long time and assuming that a lot of our educational values align with our high school, how might you prioritize this list?
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just preform here. So reserve the right to pull anything back.
We know we're in a mess.
Okay. You, you can't undervalue or under-prioritize student safety, right? So like that being a caveat, I think I can't throw out that there's a concern on student safety for site, like the way this stuff works onsite, right? So that, that to me would be primary. If we can't get kids into school and out of school safely, then we can't do anything in school to help them, right? So that, that to me is, you got to talk about that and you got to address it once we're in the building. I would say, I would say that the, as two parallel tracks, an emphasis on achieving science, like a, a more robust science offering, whatever that means, I think is important. I also think that if students and teachers had to be resourceful, which I think Walpole is resourceful, I heard it a lot tonight, that the science and, the science part can function for you for a little bit longer, but it is, it is on the later side of being like effective right now. But I would say the, the actually doing the fieldhouse gets you so much more bang for your buck on, on, and things related, like the arts that you saw tonight, your sports, which you've got incredibly successful sports teams. And I think it gets to more of the heart of all, like affects kind of all the students in a robust way, that I think that that project has so much power to be transformative in unlocking things all the way to the most, like some of the more important things that we're seeing right now in education, which is like the health, student, student health and wellness in terms of the things that student support services can have, offer. And prioritizing that as a district is also important to me. So I think the, the athletic, or the, the fieldhouse unlocks that for you and also unlocks a whole bunch of other things too. And so it's like, yeah. So I don't know, I don't know if I really gave you a priority there, but I think that the, the district is very, you're doing a lot of really great things and I think that that's, yeah, I think that, I, I would not want to see you, I don't know, I would say, let me tell you, the, the thing that's lowest on my radar would be the greenhouse. Does that help? We've, we've done one greenhouse for a school in 15 years and I think that they're incredibly valuable and I think they're underrated in what the, the, we actually placed it in a spot that I feel like would bring a lot of, a lot of interesting things to the building, give you opportunities to cross collaborate and, but in terms of priorities, I'd say probably achieving some level of safety that we're all comfortable with on the site, achieving some big goals with science, which I don't know if that's a full science Reno or just a partial science Reno. And then doing the fieldhouse unlocks a lot of things. And the thing I'm leaving off is the HVAC. And the reason I'm kind of skirting around that is because I think it's something that you have to address pragmatically at some point. And that affects health and wellness in the building, but it's also kind of bigger picture too. So we, we did, like in our early study and report, we did a report that documented all of the things that are, they're at their useful life, they're going to come up for you to do this at some point. The state has mandates that are pushing out for, you know, fossil-free fuel, fossil, fuel-free and, you know, greenhouse gas-free things that towns and buildings are going to have to deal with. And so if you have opportunity now, then I think that's just a, that's kind of just more of a business decision, do you do it or not? So I hope that's helpful.
As a follow-up to that, in the science wing in particular, although not ideal, I've, we've studied your plans extensively and what you want to do with bringing, utilizing that dead space in, in the front of each classroom. Is that something we could spread out over two or three years and gut two or three at a time? And again, not ideal, but is that practicable? I'll choose my words carefully.
Yeah. My, my advice on renovations is you need to try to, you need to try to get in there and do them as fast as you can. It's already hard enough to do an occupied phased renovation project, which we've got a big robust schedule for. And I just, I just think, I think we've already targeted that particular part of the scope as being a little bit of an extended kind of summer slammer, meaning do it over the summer kind of thing. And I just, I just think you're, everyone's going to be not happy if you're, if you're like one science room or two science rooms a year or two science rooms a summer and then like you create kind of equity and issues between teachers and classrooms and like one classroom can do X and the other one can't and who, how do we prioritize who goes into those and like that kind of thing? So if it were me, I would say, don't do it that way. Wait till you can do them all and do them all. That's my advice. And I don't, there's educators up here that probably have more experience than that with me, but just from a construction perspective, I wouldn't.
That's helpful. Thank you.
As we were having the discussion earlier in the week, I was sort of keeping tabs on like individual sort of comments on priorities. And I will say that HVAC factored high in, in the vast majority of what people stated. It wasn't number one for everybody and not everybody felt that way, but I would say that given the fact that it's a late addition, I do think that, you know, somebody can, can contradict me, but I think we're going to be forced to place it high on the priority list if we're going to go about this project in any fashion, because I think it does factor into safety, the way that you described. The sort of sticking point or the main sticking point seems to be that the, the idea of attacking the fieldhouse first versus the science first. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that who has strong opinions about one versus the other. But we're missing a couple of our colleagues tonight too, which is sort of the reason why we might be a little bit hesitant too, because we don't have everybody's voice reflected here. But anyone who wants to?
I'll try it. I'm one who thinks we should do the science first because although we don't have to go to a public vote on this, but I, I think that we have to think about what the community expects us to, to do. And to, to invest a great deal of money, the constituency that I speak with a lot sees the fact that science and technology has changed over the last 25 years. And I think that the, I think, I think that we're going to have to answer some hard questions if, if we don't include science in our, in our plans. I would also love to see the greenhouse. I understand that that's, that that's not at the same level, but I do think it is part of the environmental education that is part of students' futures. So I think we're going to face those kind of questions. So to me, it's not like an arithmetic thing where if we get the total to end up at $18,000 or, sorry, I wish, $18 million that we can afford it. It's more, it's about community expectations and I, I look at this project as not as a nice to have, but as a need to have. And I think that, that the areas of science and technology are the ones that have changed the most. And I think that, that's part of why I feel strongly about the science piece of it.
I think my, my counterpoint to that would be that the community also expects us to manage the resources that we have in as thoughtful a way as possible. And that might not mean prioritizing science, or it might not mean having it be number one, right? If we can do something that's a little more costly in dollars, but actually, as Chris said, you know, gives us more bang for our buck, are we, are we actually being better stewards of the building and the educational program than, you know, just focusing on the, the piece that is very explicitly, very directly labeled as academic? I, you know, I don't know, but it's hard to, we don't have a, we don't have a dollar amount that we know we can play with either, right? It's not like we have to cap it at 24 and we know we have to cut 6 million or whatever it might be. Yes, Mark?
I would have, have a thought. What if we were to have, outside of our, our view, what if we were to have the science teachers, the phys ed teachers, student services and arts people and the building administration sit down and they decide what their school needs?
Yeah.
And take, at least take that as advice. It's not such a shocking idea.
I mean, we did, we did hear from Principal Embush. He, he very strongly came out in favor of prioritizing the site work in the fieldhouse and the music and multipurpose space and the HVAC over the science addition. I don't know if he speaks for that entire staff, right? But that's based on his many years of being there. That was his, that was his list.
Do you, Ma'am Chair? With all due respect, building a fieldhouse just viscerally seems so dumb to me as, as the, as the initial point of departure and the, as we continue to sit with this, and I know the building very well, and we kind of talk about the, the long history of the building and its five or six additions. It, it seems to, in an emergent thought, and I think the, the chair has raised that counterpoint well, about how do we, how are we stewards? We don't want to be here if, if they weren't building a new Tri-County, we may not even be having this prioritization conversation, but they are and this is life and this is how we, these are the decisions we have to make based on the facts we have. I, I just, I keep going back to being, being cognizant of how all of the renovation attempts we have had, we have tried to make for 100 years on that building have been hemmed in by the fact that it's got streets on three sides and conservation land on the other. Unlike Byrd, which is going, the, the new Walpole Middle School, which is going so well, we didn't have that space to just start again and, and level the old. The, the only way I can, as we talk about, how do we explain a new fieldhouse to the community is that this is the first, you know, this is our sort of last best effort to generate more space in that building. And, you know, trying to take a step back, it, it's very hard for me to say, as much as I, we had music and drum here today, to say we're going to do athletics and music. Site work, obviously, because it's very, very central to, to safety, but to do things that many may, I may not agree with them totally, talk about our surrounding and ancillary to sort of core academic subjects. That being said, the, the science wing perhaps could wait a few years, but I think that also is, is still very vital. So as we, as we wrestle with this, I'm, as we've, we've all talked about, very frustrated to be involved in this exercise in the first place, but as I try to understand how we could move forward, I think, you know, as we try to explain to the community that this internal dialogue, putting the fieldhouse closer to the top, just because steel will never be as cheap as it is now. I think we can all agree, you guys have been in construction and building, it's going to probably continue to grow and this is the least amount of steel to, to grow that building's footprint in a very wonky space that it has. So I guess I, in the past have kind of had the fieldhouse a little lower on it, but as we talked about, it does unlock some opportunities. It's kind of, it just, it frustrates me that it kind of has to be that high because it is slightly less central, I think, to education. But I, through this meeting and through the others we've had, I've, I've sort of grown in my openness to moving that ahead. And then I guess my other, my question after my rambling statement was, maybe Mr. Fisher could explain to me, just for my own benefit. I thought we talked about advocated for, maybe had allocation of some funds for the front driveway and like why is that? of some funds for the front driveway, and like, why is that in this number, and why are we seemingly eating it again? Not, I mean, because the, the driver extension is pretty much the same as the student services, or perhaps could be a, a good chunk of other site work, but I thought we talked about this a few years ago, and had, it was wrapped up initially in the, the walls that were falling down in the front of it, so maybe just for public edification, how we got to having this back on the list would be great.
So, there were two items that you guys supported in, on a prior capital items, same year, one was for the wall at the high school, which we did the work with Chris's assistance to repair the brick wall in front of the high school, and then the second part of that, for $600,000, I believe, was the driveway, and it was extending the driveway, or somehow accommodating the driveway to protect the safety of students, which was highlighted originally from Walpole Police, and then was brought forward to us, and we saw the same concern, and shared that, so there was a, a funding of a capital line item for around $600,000 to solve that problem. As this project progressed, some of that money got kind of captured into the project itself without being earmarked for the driveway, and it was kind of a, I don't want to say oversight, overlooked, but it wasn't considered as part of the initial list, and so therefore, we're looking at tonight as this additional $1 million to, to solve this problem. So that's how it kind of got pulled out and separately funded.
Yeah, credit for the 600K we didn't charge, that rolled back into free cash and went somewhere?
I believe that it was rolled into this.
It's part of this project.
Okay.
I think it's part of the, the dollars that are being set aside to fund.
Okay.
This, but the scope of it was not in what was kind of voted on the last time we talked to you. When we went through this last time, there were two options for site, one was a robust redo of the entire site, which would, like, in our consultant's opinion, solved a lot of the issues, big picture, like, but it was an expensive line item, and it was decided at those meetings that we would go with the more minimal site approach, which was just parking and addressing this area around the fieldhouse, and that driveway extension wasn't included in that scope, and so that, that, that was sort of, you know, back then, had you decided to go with the whole site, big redo of that, this driveway extension conversation would have been included in that, and, but now it's not, you see, that, 'cause, 'cause of that discussion, and just.
So, understanding that we may not come to a full consensus on this tonight, I wonder if we could begin to think about areas where we do have a consensus, for example, as much as it breaks my student counselor heart, I don't hear anybody making a very strong case that the counseling and student support services renovation needs to be very high on the list, and we have heard from our colleagues on the town side that some of that may be able to be funded through the capital process in coming years, and so I don't know if people, how, how committee members feel about giving Chris an indication, at least that that's likely to be at the bottom of our list.
Would say so.
I would say so.
Or near the bottom.
Yeah.
And then, what about HVAC? How are we feeling about pushing that towards the top of the priority list, given that we have a couple of million dollars available potentially in revenue to, to fund that specifically?
I think it needs to be high up.
Mark?
I would add what I said the other day, I got a new thermostat in my classroom, and so I, and it has CO2, so I look at it, I come in the morning, the room's about 68 degrees, and as the day goes on, just because of body temperature, it's 77 or 78 later in the day, it starts with a CO2 kind of about 450, and unless I keep the door open and crack a window, it hits about 1,300, and you don't want kids sitting in a room that are 75 degrees with 1,200 parts per million of carbon dioxide. We take that for granted, kids are used to it, it's normalized, but it's not the way it's supposed to be.
I, I think just, for me, academics needs to be the focus, and as you said, HVAC is going to have to get done at some point. I do not love the fact that we're talking about it now, and I think our focus should be on academics, and I do think, based upon my discussions and my job, there are going to be incentives, there are a lot of bargains being made across the state with how are we gonna get to these goals that are ridiculously ambitious, and I don't think people really think through the cost of it all, there's going to have to be more incentives, so I would push that down the road and focus on academics, and that's what, in my opinion, we should be focusing on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, probably to the business manager. We also got a number of pieces of state funding, I know we were able to, I was trying to conceptualize this, because they're fully funding school lunch, we'll probably be able to knock the cafeteria off the HVAC list, I know we got an earmark for the wood shop, we're talking about the other areas having the, the cost rolled into, so are we really talking about just $7.1 million, just for the old Spanish wing and the old part of the high school? The old 1909 wing? That's, because if you talk about, we're, we're basically ripping everything else out, so as we, as we look at the number, it just seems kind of high for me, the, so I'd, I'd love, because we're not fully deciding on the, the punch list here, I'd love to get a little more detail on how we came to that, and I know you guys did a lot of work on that, and as far as the incentives are concerned, I think, I agree, I mean, we, we haven't just started talking about HVAC, we've been talking about HVAC for two years, we had a lot of great federal opportunity to pay for HVAC, unfortunately, the town went in other directions despite the fact that we were shovel-ready, but I, again, I think that, you talk about the CO2 levels and the needs, it's great to have a nice new building in part, and then go over to, down by the oak trees in the oldest part, and fall asleep in the middle of history, so that, I think, is, is counterintuitive to academic outcomes, but I, I still think it should be at the very least in the middle of the pack, and we should try to start utilizing some of these incentives, because much like the, some of the electric car incentives that have gone away, I don't necessarily believe that they'll, the incentives will go on a, an arc indefinitely for greater, I think, that they may phase out, as the state has done with some other incentives similarly.
I guess I agree with what Jen started to say about, I think, I want our decision to reflect academics as much as possible, but I think, I, I, I think that HVAC is academics, too. I mean, we were talking about the old part of the building, and, you know, granted, end of August, September, and June are when it's really hard to work in, in that, in that part of the school, but it can get horribly difficult to work, and that's science and social studies, you know, and it's, and it's also art in the basement, but, you know, it's, the science and social studies, you hear a lot about how uncomfortable.
We're doing science.
I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong, it's, I don't really do well past nine o'clock. Yeah, I meant to say, English and social studies, so that is academics, I guess, in my mind, the HVAC is a pretty high priority.
The other question I want to pose, and then I think we can figure out next steps, is for the, for the, the committee members who feel strongly about prioritizing the science portion of the renovation, how, in your minds, do you feel like the science renovation and the greenhouse must be married together, or would you consider separating them out on your priority list?
I'd break them up.
You would break them up?
I would, too, because I'm being part of a team. As an individual, I wouldn't, but I do think we just all have to be willing to compromise, so yeah, I would.
I, I look at them and think, the greenhouse isn't a lot of money to have a big impact, that's why I would do them together, but, I mean, I'm not, I can understand why we're saying you could add that later easily, so I understand the rationale for moving it down.
I don't think we ever will, unfortunately, you know.
Yeah, so in that case, then I would say.
And that gets me back to the, that gets me back to the January conversation, like, if we're gonna break it up, I would like to know, I would like to say that we're presenting a two-part or a three-part project, as opposed to, we prioritize.
And it never happens.
Because we did this at the end of the 1990s, and that's why we have what we have now. We have a certain amount of money, and we just tried to shoehorn in what we could do, and I'd rather not do that again, but it goes back to that January meeting, can we get buy-in that we're, that it's a two-part project, or can we get buy-in that it's even potentially a three-part project if, if it needs to be, because we don't know what the number is.
Chris, do you have any further comments about phasing, if we were to break it up? Like, anything that you haven't already mentioned that we would want to consider? Because I truly think the town, like, they may want, they may be amenable to a phased approach, but they're not gonna want to sit there and hash out the phases with us, they're gonna want us to say, this is what we propose, and I think we need to be clear on that, so I'm just curious if there's anything else for us to have in mind if we think about a phased approach.
Can you clarify what you mean by phased approach? Like?
So, like, if we were to say that in phase one, like, and this is just like, you know, off the top of my head, like, the science and the greenhouse, I'm not even putting these in, in order, but like, the science and the greenhouse are one phase that we plan to tackle within the, the next year, and then, you know, we think that in FY27, we can start phase two, which is fieldhouse site work, et cetera, and then phase three is like, filling in behind, right, counseling and whatnot, like, what, that's just a complete random assortment of, of ideas, but like, is there anything that we would want to make sure goes together or happens for second, third?
I think the only kind of link is that you can't do student support services or multipurpose music without doing the addition.
Mm-hmm.
So, if those become identified things that you value, I shouldn't say value, because you value it all, right?
Me, too.
But things that you have to make a hard decision on, then you can't do them unless you do the other one, but the other parts, you could do them, and sort of, and we actually, when we were talking about schedule and stuff, and how we would, so there's, like, there's that kind of phasing, and then there's like, you have one project with all these components, and how do we phase it to get it done with kids in the building? We were talking about orders that they would go, just constructability-wise, and so I think that you can take them in different, like, different orders, it has different implications and things like that, but I think that, yeah, I think the mul, the, the addition, the, the fieldhouse addition just unlocks other options and ideas, whereas science is just science, that, that's all you're doing at that point, and so, yeah, you can phase in and out of that. The, the one caveat is that the electrification, let's say you decided you wanted to do that first, and then two years from now you decide, or three years from now, when that's done, you decide you want to do something in the science wing, you're gonna go back into science and try to configure around stuff that you did two years prior, so that kind of sequence doesn't make a ton of, like, logic flow, in my mind, so that, that is one of the things that I would say, if you plan on doing anything long-term in a space, I would do that while you're in there doing the HVAC, because otherwise you're gonna have to, you'll be stuck with legacy HVAC stuff that you have to work around, which creates, you know, that, that's kind of where you are now, right? So.
Just when I was wrapping my head around this, he said this.
You know.
Very complicated point.
I know.
It's not, it's not an easy choice, and I, and I will tell you that our strategy right now is that we're designing all of it.
Yeah.
And, you know, stuff comes up, we're trying to accommodate and design it, and then price it, and see where the things are gonna come out, and hopefully move the conversation forward, but at some point, the town as a collective, and probably led by the school committee, is gonna have to put a priority forward that we then will put on the street for bids, and say, the way, the way you accomplish it in a bidding environment is you just say, this is alternate one, two, three, four, and you have to take them in that order when you bid, right? So, you, you wouldn't say alternate one is student support services if alternate three is the fieldhouse, because you can't do alternate one if you don't do alternate three, you have to take them in order, you can't mess around with the order, so that's why this, this conversation becomes important, when you start to get numbers and budgeting and stuff like that, and for us, whenever we're doing scoping and the phasing of like, constructability, that has implications on price, too, right? So, so, some of it's hard to quantify, but, yeah, we're hopefully here to help you think through it, but that's kind of where you're at, so.
All right. Well, I'm sorry that we did not come to a.
Just, finally, through to ask the chair's question in a different manner, is there a timeframe that, you know, if, if we're phasing, obviously, let's hope that we're not doing this once every 10 years, but is it like, after two or three or four years, it also becomes an issue if, if we've broken it into, say, two or three sections, that trying to interconnect systems and the like, because obviously all the wings are connected? Would you say if, if we were gonna break it up to try to do it, at le, at least every other year, or every third year, is, is there a point at which that type of phasing, that will be helpful to understand as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think you've got a, I don't know how to answer that, really, it's, it, the thing that just came through my mind was you've got middle schoolers who are going through a transition into a new school, that are gonna be experiencing high school, and if like, their whole six through 12 experience is some form of construction and drawn out like, projects to better the schools, like, I just think at some point, you just, like, getting organized and just saying, we're gonna attack this very quickly, and make an environment where we're like, trying to not have construction going on when school is, is a value, and I think you can't lose sight of that value, because, I mean, no matter how hard we try to separate these things, it's a distraction, it's gonna be some level of distraction, and like, coexisting with construction projects, I know, like, Nancy, you lived through one, and like, the, it just, it's, it's doable and it's fine, it's happening great at the Byrd right now, but I think just, like, I think you want to just be cautious of saying, like, every two years, we're coming in there with new contractors and new things, and like, doing things, and then all of a sudden, you've got a project that could have been done in 18 months, or some 20 months, 24 months, and it's now eight years, you know, or something, I think that's, that's a drag, so.
When does the list absolutely need to be final?
I mean, I'd encourage you to try to get there as quickly as you can, you know, but that's just, that's just because I think it's valuable to make decisions and get behind them and.
Yeah.
Keep going, but, but I think, like I said, we're, we're trying to give, what we're trying to do is be flexible with our process, that we can keep designing the fullness of everything that's been put on the table, keep getting cost data and information available for you all, and then make a decision, a final, final decision, with the most information that we can, at the, at the sort of latest point that we can, so that's a fancy way to say, I don't know what this exact date is, but we're trying to equip you with as much as we can along the way, and make sure that these kinds of conversations aren't happening, you know, like, at the last minute when we need it to happen, so we're trying to get out there early, get you the information, get these conversations going, yeah, and then that way you can probe the people that you need to about priorities and.
I think we would all agree, we would like to get this finalized as quickly as possible, but we're not equipped to finish the LSAT logic puzzle at 9:30. I would suspect that when we ultimately come to a decision, you will find, you know, the HVAC, the science piece, although perhaps not the greenhouse and the fieldhouse, in the top half of this, that would be my guess. That would be my guess. The order, the exact order and kind of what follows from there, I couldn't say, but I think we could at least probably give you that to go on tonight, and we will finalize it as, with all due speed.
You, you take your process. We'll, we'll keep going. I think it's a good conversation, and I think, yeah.
The only addendum I would say is I think we may have to look at the driveway sooner rather than later.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we'll keep you in the loop on that conversation too. I don't think we have to decide anything right this minute, but...
No, I think, but as Phil alluded to, like, money has technically been allocated for that project and approved by town meeting, and so we have to keep that, bear that in.
Let it disappear somewhere else into the ether and we see it again.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chris and team, and you'll hear from us soon.
Thank you.
Um, do we want to, um, yeah, while you're all here, do, would you mind if we went into our middle school building update in case there was anything? Very quickly, very forward of that. Mark, do you want to speak to that? And then we'll come back to superintendent report.
So my update is usually to the effect that it's still on time and on budget, and I leave it at that, unless you have anything to add. So, looks pretty cool.
I'll make our, my project manager really happy, Matt Barnhart. He, all of our weekly staff meetings, he just says Walpole's cranking.
Cranking, like it.
I think, I think that's a good term. It is cranking, it is like, things are moving fast. Fontaine's doing a great job, and...
And you guys are too.
And a lot of the stuff educationally, I think, is coming together. If you've had a chance to be in the building at all, you kind of see those moments kind of come alive, and it's cool, so.
Yes. All right. That was quick. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we will go now to the first reading of the 2024-25 school year calendar.
So enclosed in your packet is a proposed draft calendar for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you.
The calendar proposes that teachers will return to school on Monday, August 26. Students in grades one to 12 will return to school on Wednesday, August 28. PK and kindergarten students will return to school on Tuesday, September 3, all being the year 2024. And the last day of school for grades K to 11, of course, without any snow or emergency days, would be Friday, June 13, 2025. This is, as Carrie said, the first reading of the proposed 24-25 school year calendar.
I just want to say, I think the kids are going to love the extended break, because I don't know how many questions I've received about, wait, I have school next week? And this adds a couple days just before Christmas falls.
It does, it does. I saw that, yeah.
So it's a longer break, so I think everybody's going to be rejoicing at this one.
Yeah. A full, a full five days before the break is rough for kids and teachers alike, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so everyone can take some time to review this. This is just our first read. If anything jumps out at you, let us know, and we'll come back to it at a future meeting. But families should know that this is typically approved by end of January, early February. So after that, you can start booking your vacations for 24-25. Um, and after that, we have the first reading of the 2024-25 school committee meeting calendar.
So enclosed in your packet is the draft for the 24-25 school committee meeting calendar. It's proposed draft calendar for that year. This draft calendar is presented for your discussion review at the first reading, and there were, from what I could tell, no major changes between the two.
So I am noticing, Dr. Hahn, that our first meeting is scheduled for the first day of school, August 28. And I don't know how you, Dr. Goff, and Mr. Frischa feel about having a meeting after what is sure to be an incredibly busy day.
Yeah, I, I think the change we made for that, in the years past, we used to have the principals report then, and that was one of the changes we made, is that that was a big day for them. We didn't mind attending that first day, but we were just making sure we were confident that it would be a tough day for our principals.
Actually, is that?
I have to look at that.
That is, oh, August 28th is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
So maybe that's a misprint. Maybe it's the 29th for our first meeting for Thursday. We're off the hook.
Yeah, it's the second day.
Yeah, way, way easier. Second day, everything's running like clock.
Everybody's sorted.
So again, this is a first reading. If anyone sees anything else, let us know. We will approve this at a future meeting. Um, I guess one question before we move off this topic would be whether or not we've heard anything from the town clerk's office about the town elections moving this spring or not. You know, at fall town meeting, we approved a change to our election calendar so that it is now on a weekday in May rather than a Saturday in June. And there was, it didn't seem likely that that change was going to take effect in 2024. Have we heard of it?
I don't think we're going to need to lose a lot of sleep on that this morning.
All right, all right, great. Okay, anything else? Moving on to the assistant superintendent report.
Yeah, well, this is, I, I want to be fair. This is still the superintendent report, because like when a teacher's out sick, good teachers leave good subplans. So this is from Dr. Goff, and I'm going to read it, I'm going to read it as such. So it has been a while since we last met, which was November 16th, so there's a lot to update on, and I'll move through this as efficiently as possible. So prior to Thanksgiving break, it was exciting for Dr. Goff to, and then the field hockey team take home the championship at WPI. And I think there were some members of the school committee that attended as well. And then she was quickly able to race, in quotes, over where she joined a couple other staff members, and I was really pleased to be there as well, to the cross-country championship meet in the afternoon at Fort Devens. Then on Sunday afternoon, Dr. Goff and I attended, as I mentioned before, the amazing performance of Annie by the students who celebrated this evening. Then the following week, of course, there was the Super Bowl. It was the first time in 15 years that Walpole made it to Gillette. We know that there were some disappointed students and fans, but we are so proud of what was accomplished, and we're looking forward, already looking forward to next season and how we'll continue to build off that season. We will recognize both the football team and field hockey team at a January school committee meeting.
Oh, good.
Last Friday, Dr. Goff attended the MEKO conference, the MEKO directors conference. Keynote speaker, Dr. Kimberly Parker, with, who focused on literacy, belief in the power of literacy to normalize the high achievement of all students. She was joined by many other Walpole Public School staff. We were well represented, and it was a fantastic conference. That same day, I was able to attend my job alike with assistant superintendents, where we continue to talk and dive deep into our curriculum and the things that are happening in districts and the challenges we're facing and how we can work together to achieve greatness. Last Wednesday, Dr. Goff held her second superintendent student cabinet with Walpole High School students, working on projects that the students identified that will have the greatest impact on the student body. So she'll report further on the details as those projects move a little bit further along. And as usual, all instructional leaders, both at the district and building levels, have been very active, visiting classrooms, visiting schools, with a real strong emphasis on teaching and learning. As you know, we begin the budget process for the 2024 school year. Mr. Frischa and Dr. Goff are meeting with all members of the leadership council to discuss their goods and services budget. This week, they met with principals, and next week, they will meet with district leaders, Mr. Reeve, Dr. Quealy, and myself. The budget hearing is scheduled for January 18. The Fails Leach, Rogers, and Coen Scholarship was held on December 5. That was, if I get this number correctly, there was $108,000, approximately $108,000 awarded in scholarships, which is just absolutely incredible. Those who received scholarships should have received a letter from Dr. Goff, a thank you to school committee and principal English for participating in this process. Kindergarten preregistration for the 24-25 school year begins on January 2. Information will be sent out via principal e-notes, notice in the newspaper, on website, and in mailers. Families can drop off that registration to the main office of your elementary school, at your neighborhood elementary school, from 9 to 2 PM. You can copy and you can mail it to the school, you can scan it and email it to the school, and you can also drop it off to the superintendent's office in town hall, room 204, Monday and Wednesday from 7 to 5, Tuesday from 7 to 8, and Friday from 7 to 4. We always appreciate when families get those numbers in, because it helps us with our scheduling and our projections for the following year. So we greatly appreciate families doing that as quickly as they're able to. And then remember to check those calendars, as this is a busy time of year for concerts. And on December 22nd, it is a full day to the, to the sadness of some of our kids.
And teachers.
But we're getting our full money's worth, our full money's worth that day. And winter, our taxpayers are getting their full money. Winter break runs through January 1st and will return on January 2nd, and that is the update.
Thank you.
Any questions? My heart caught in my chest because I realized that my baby's going to get signed up for kindergarten next month.
Oh, boy.
That's the last one. Oh, my goodness. So soon. Um, she's ready. So, uh, next item on the agenda is high school renovation project. I think we've covered that one, unless anybody has anything else to say.
Well, no.
Um, and then on to subcommittee activity. Any subcommittee meetings in the past month?
No.
Nope? Um, then on to the warrants. I, I am aware that Ms. Rogers did in fact review the warrants, and we were able to approve them at this meeting if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2417 PS and 2419 PS as listed in your packet. Second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor, proposed, abstained, 500.
I'd like to make a motion to approve food services and accounts payable warrant 224020, 224021, 224022, and 224023 as, pardon me, yeah, 224023 is listed in your packet.
Second. Motion by Mr. Green, second by Mrs. Gayotzett. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. Uh, this evening, we also have our quarterly approval of budget transfers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the $722,471 of transfers as listed in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. And would somebody like to take the next?
Three, Madam Chair, before we begin, can we just approve the student activity funds, which was a singleton on that page, warrant number 224023? So we called them out as food service and transfer.
Yes, okay.
$6,000 is going to go out the door.
So should we perhaps amend Mr. Green's earlier, previous motion to include...
Student activity funds in 224023.
Mr. Green, are you comfortable with that?
Sure, that's where I paused, but I noticed that it's got the same warrant number as the other, so...
Correct, yes. So we have for that warrant number, food services accounts payable and student activity funds. So amended motion by Mr. Green for the second, and Mrs. Gayotzett, and all those in favor? Closed, abstained, 500. Thank you, Mr. Buckley, and the next.
Uh, three, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the donation from Bay State Textiles, Shutterfly, and Ron and Iris, Iris Nason to Opus Road School in the combined amount of $2,364, to the Elm Street School from Bay State Textiles, amount of $68, to Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles for $50, from Ron and Iris Nason to Walpole High School in $100, and from Walpole Media Systemwide, $9,511.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. And lastly, would someone like to take the next?
Three, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the November 16th, 2023 school committee meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Gayotzett. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 401.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Green, second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 500. Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. And we wish you a restful holiday break. We'll see you in 2024.